Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel. Sonal Khulani.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, great. I note that we note that everybody is present. A quick review of the agenda. We'll start off as always with public comment. And then the president's report will include student recognition, an educational presentation on our board policy seven 12 racial equity, diversity and inclusion. We'll hear our students' school board rep reports. We'll have a superintendent's report, the consent vote agenda, which includes items that were discussed in committee. Those normally include things like, uh, where is it? The things that are routinely approved each month, minutes, destruction of closed audio recordings, educational to requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable supplemental bills list and financial reports. After the consent vote agenda, we will move to our program and personnel committee, followed by a report from our facilities and finance committee. We'll have an update on the Illinois Association of School Boards and CEDOL. We'll discuss future agenda items. We will retire to executive, uh, executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters five ILCS one twenty slash two C two, as well as an employment of an employee. And when we return to open session, we may or may not be voting. After that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So let's start off with an invitation for public comment. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the board?
Lisa Hessel, President.
Going once? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any email public comments?
We do not.
Okay. Um, so for the president's report, we are going to start off with one of our favorite things, which is student recognition.
Thank you. Uh, my name is John Gilliam, the principal of Vernon Hills High School, and with Tom Clint is principal of Libertyville. We are honored tonight to recognize students who have been selected as IHSA All-State Academic, uh, which is quite a significant honor. Each year, uh, there are 26 students across the entire state. Some, oh, eight hundred schools, something crazy when you consider the number of high schools, 26 students, thirteen males, thirteen females. In Vernon Hills alone, I think, uh, I think we've had eleven over the course of our twenty, uh, plus years. And so this is a significant recognition and we are really proud of, uh, three student athletes today. Uh, these athletes have to maintain a three point five GPA, which for, uh, on a four point scale, so that does not include honors and AP waiting, uh, which I think for all three of them is probably no problem. Uh, plus they have had significant contribution and at least, at least two IHSA sanctioned sports. Uh, but again, probably most of these have more than that. So, uh, we are just honored to be able to recognize these three. I get to introduce the one from Vernon Hills and I want to bring up Devon Mulcrone. Come on up Devon, give him a hand.
Audience clapping.
Of course, these are all seniors, uh, also all recognized in a pretty cool ceremony a couple of weeks ago down in, uh, Bloomington. But Devon was, let's see, cross-country swimming and tennis, right? And, uh, all three are all four years in each of those three sports. Uh, and we're just proud of you Devon and excited for, uh, your future in Duke, at Duke, and then beyond, right? Congratulations.
Audience clapping.
Tom Coolen Test Principal.
You might see a pattern forming here because one of our LHS students is also Duke-bound. Um, we will bring up, uh, somebody very, uh, near and dear to the board, our board rep and, um, uh, All-State Academic. Um, awardee is Ryan McGrory. Come on down, Ryan.
Audience clapping.
Ryan, you may have set the record for not only doing twelve but thirteen, thirteen sports, thirteen varsity letters, because you during the pandemic did four sports instead of just three seasons, right? So loves being, uh, busy and involved. And so, um, not only your main sport is dance, obviously, but, uh, dabble in track, pole vaulting, a little bit of lacrosse on the side, um, a couple of other things that I might be forgetting, correct? Excellent. You know, just a few other things. And then, uh, we are also excited to celebrate Andrew Brooks. There's Andrew.
Audience clapping.
Tom Coolen Test Principal.
Cross-country swim and track. I knew, I knew cross-country and track. I wasn't sure if there was a winter sport in there. So you're twelve varsity letters or twelve sport? Yeah. Twelve season athletes. Awesome. Awesome. Um, and as John said, this is something, you know, we celebrate a lot in District 128. This is one of those things that is just truly remarkable. Most school districts don't have any students selected. Um, this is in my short time in District 128. This is the second time in, um, four or five years, we've had multiple athletes from both schools selected in the same years. Uh, it's just a testament to the quality of our young people and the commitments they make, not only to academics, but to their athletic endeavors as well. And we're just delighted to see, um, them recognized at the state level. So we've got certificates.
Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken.
All right, LHS, come on.
Thank you.
Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken. Photographs being taken.
One more?
Audience clapping. Audience clapping.
Twelve-season athletes. I love that. Love it.
I, I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge the commitment of, um, Andrew and Ryan and Devon's parents, who without their dedication and commitment to their, uh, students' activities, uh, probably, uh, would have been much more difficult. Not impossible, knowing these kids, but much more difficult. So definitely want to recognize, uh, the parent.
Audience clapping.
And, uh, so at this time, I'd like to ask to have our educational presentation, uh, Board Policy seven 12 racial equity, diversity and inclusion.
Technical difficulties. Technical difficulties.
Tom Coolen Test Principal.
A good evening. Thank you. Am I on? You're on.
I'm on.
All right. Uh, good evening. Thank you for, uh, inviting us to share this presentation with you. I stand as just one member of our district equity leadership team. And tonight you'll hear from representatives of that committee. Um, tonight John Gilliam is gonna speak. And our school equity coordinators are here, Amy Christian, Terry Young from Vernon Hills, and of course Anne Singleton from Libertyville High School. Um, we are gonna share with you as a, as a board, just a summary of the work that our district equity leadership team has been conducting this year. And, um, we'll just briefly summarize some of the, um, work that we've done and some of the implications that we believe it has for District 128 as we move forward in this important work. I don't have a clicker, so I don't know if I need to just give you the, the nod bow. All right. As you know, District 128 has our daring mission and fundamental to that daring mission is equity and inclusion. That is embedded deeply within our mission and within the vision of who we believe we are as a district. Specifically, if we look at some of the daring attributes aware, um, we reflect frequently to discover who we are and who we may become. Inquisitive, we are curious about the world's complicated past, present and future. We ponder problems, question convention, propose solutions, and of course, global, seeing diversity as an asset and a benefit, and thinking about the ways we, uh, collaborate and communicate to participate in an increasingly interdependent world. When we look at our daring mission, found, um, at the foundation of that is this belief that we in District 128 are about equity and inclusion because we are about all students in all classrooms, experiencing and reaching their full potential in our spaces. We're about equity of access, that every child in our system deserves access to all facets of the school. We're about equity of outcomes. We want excellence for all of our students. Um, and of course systemic accountability. And that's really where our work becomes special. This is not just talk in District 128. Um, we believe so much in the importance of this mission and in the importance of equity and inclusion, that we went a step further, as you know, we have embedded this work in district policy. Last year, we, um, uh, you as a board, um, uh, created the racial equity and inclusion policy. Sorry, Bo, if we could move forward, uh, policy seven 12. And what's important about this policy is it not only, um, codifies our district's commitment to our work, it also, um, says how we're gonna walk this talk. And it gives us very specific actions that we as a professional team take to ensure that equity and inclusion goals are met, that we're measuring progress towards those goals and that we are reporting out on our progress to you as a board and to our community. So the D E L T is a very large group of staff members of, um, both from Vernon Hills, from Libertyville and the district office, representing different employee classifications. And to talk a little bit more about the work we did is John Gilliam.
John Gilliam, Principal.
Thanks, Tom. So this group, uh, back in August, Dr. Herman challenged the entire staff, um, to get involved in some of these daring initiatives that we were participating in. This is the list of, uh, fifty-plus staff members who took advantage of the call and signed up to work on the district equity, um, policy. We began meeting in the fall and, uh, began work on, um, on, on the tasks that were laid in front of us. We began to review and understand, uh, the equity policy, what it asked for and understand the eleven commitments as they related to schoolwork, district work and community work. Uh, we then prioritized those, um, eleven, uh, through some voting and discussion and settled on four commitments that we were to focus on this year, Bo. So here are the, the four, uh, in general, uh, they have to do with C one, commitment one is in, uh, affirming environments. C two has to do with hiring, recruiting and retaining. Uh, C three, commitment three deals with student success and C six deals with, uh, curriculum. Remember, all eleven commitments are important, uh, but these were the four that the team centered on this year and will be reporting here tonight as we did two weeks ago in our committee meeting. Uh, once the four teams were selected, we began to work in a process, uh, that each team worked in, uh, kind of in sync together. Uh, the first step of the process was to collect and analyze data. Uh, the second step was to look at research and current best practice. Uh, the third step was to consider what actions, uh, we can, we, uh, currently were doing and what we might do, uh, in the future as we refine our work. And finally, the reporting component of that, which is, uh, why we are here, uh, in front of you tonight. Uh, so tonight we are going to just briefly talk through the four commitments. Uh, again, two weeks ago, for those in the audience, we spent a, a good amount of time interacting with the board, looking, diving pretty deep into the data, diving pretty deep into, uh, the research and its implications. Uh, tonight we're gonna focus, uh, on a shortened summary of just the implications as it relates to the work that we plan to do in the upcoming years. So.
Hi there. I'm Amy Christian. I'm one of the equity coordinators and English teachers at Vernon Hills High School. And I had the pleasure, um, of working on the C one commitment group alongside Tom and an amazing team of, um, teachers and counselors and folks and all sorts of roles all over the building. So we focused on C one, ensuring that D 128 schools are identity-affirming environments. And that is for students, for their families and for their communities, so that they all feel safe and welcome and valued. And so based on a lot of research and pulling together a lot of the data that we have currently, we saw there were two main strands for our implications and actions going forward. The first strand is as it relates to our parent and community engagement, and then the second, as it relates to student belonging. So the data and research suggests that as a district, we need to create spaces for culturally and linguistically diverse parents and community members to collaborate, to connect with one another, to bridge between the feeder schools and the high schools, and then to foster the opportunity to partner with schools. It's all about making connections and making sure that every single family feels connected to our district, um, all around, all along the way, um, from, you know, coming in when they're freshmen to leaving when they're seniors and getting amazing awards all along. Um, so we want to improve our practices and understanding around culturally responsive communication with families. We realize that's a place that we can do a lot more learning in order to improve our practices, which would include bidirectional and face-to-face communication instead of, you know, always using emails and phone calls. A multimodal communication that will accommodate for all of our families' needs. Inclusive meeting times, inclusive meeting spaces, so that we're not always, um, expecting for all parents to be able to come, I mean, all community members to be able to come at the same old times and places. Information presented in language that families understand, so their home languages and that they relate to. So not always speaking with educational jargon that perhaps families are not familiar with, so that that way they can all feel like they are a part of the conversation. That also includes making all directions and all decisions that impact parents and families in concert with parents and families and telling them, instead of telling them, here's what we've decided, bringing them in to be along the way with that process. That's enabling all families to be empowered and informed advocates for their children. Um, and if you look through the report, you see some suggestions for ways for us to be doing more and more of that. When it comes to student belonging, there's a lot of data and, um, in our school buildings, um, and there's a lot of research out there that pushed us towards these three big key points. We need to be providing both formal and informal opportunities for student affinity gatherings as well as alliance opportunities. So affinity gatherings are gatherings where students who have a common identity come together. Alliance gatherings are places where students across identities come together, and both of those are really, really important. We need formal staff-directed programming for our students and also informal student-driven affinity groups and spaces so that students can take ownership of that as well. We also need to foster more opportunities for dialogue across identities in order to help all students feel that safety, that value, that belonging. We need to prioritize our staff connections with every single student in the building. And this can be driven by a teacher, coach, mentor model with a formal structure so that we don't just assume that every single student has somebody in the building that they are connected with, but we can ensure that that is in place. We also need to ensure that every student receives mentorship. So, and our last strand is creating identity-affirming classroom environments. So it, these are the sorts of things that need to happen both outside the classroom and within the classroom. So removing barriers to student learning and promoting academic mindset is one of those ways to foster identity-affirming classroom environments and, and, and create a sense of belonging. And that also needs to be informed by professional learning and culturally responsive education. So in both of these strands, we know that it's going to take more learning on behalf of staff to learn to be more culturally responsive in our communication with families and in providing classroom environments for our students that are welcoming and safe and full of belonging for every single student who walks in our doors. Thank you. Yeah.
And, um, what is important for you as a board to understand for all of our groups is when we talk about the, um, uh, data that we used, you provide us tools, um, to do that data work. So the five essential survey that we invite all of our staff and students and parents to take is an important piece of data in this work. But then our Illinois Youth Survey that we administer and our Panorama Equity and Inclusion Survey, as well as some of the SEL surveys that we administer through Panorama are very important because it helps us get a sense of our students and/or parents and staff thinking about some of these environments. Specifically, when we think about, am I as a, as a human being affirmed, am I seen, am I valued in this environment? Those surveys become very important tools for us to get a good sense of, um, not only individual students, but our large groups of students as well.
John Gilliam, Principal.
Okay, commitment two, uh, focused on recruiting, hiring and retaining, ultimately retaining, uh, an increased number of staff of color. Uh, data suggested in our country, schools are increasingly more diverse in student population. Fifty percent of schools or fifty percent of students across the nation are students of color. Uh, and meanwhile, only eighteen percent of teachers are teachers of color. Uh, and that gap is continuing to grow. Uh, the, the, uh, staffing trends at D 128 are encouraging. Uh, over the last four years, we've seen an increase of staff of color from six point three percent to nine point two percent. Uh, and so those trends are, uh, encouraging, but we are committed to, uh, furthering that work and increasing that percentage so that it mirrors our own student demographics and those of the global community. Uh, we want to do that in really some, um, intentional ways. So first in recruiting and hiring, uh, we will increase our presence at job fairs and posting sites. Uh, as COVID releases its grip, we will recommit to finding local and statewide, statewide job fairs that get us access to diverse and excellent candidate pool. Uh, just as, uh, importantly, teachers of color are drawn to schools where they see themselves. Uh, it will be important for us to send administrators of color to these job fairs so that we can address and attract a diverse candidate pool. Uh, we want to address the pipeline at a local level as well. This is, uh, a little bit more difficult for us as a high school, but we're gonna do what we can. We'll move, uh, we'll start by moving, uh, to create and build a Future Teacher of America Club at both schools. We always attract our own D 128 graduates. Uh, as teachers in the district, we have, uh, several staff members who have been graduates of our high schools. Uh, so if we can encourage our students and especially those of color to pursue teaching jobs, uh, then we have a good chance of luring them back upon graduation. Uh, we have already taken steps to change the interview protocol to better track applicants and hires. Uh, we, um, realize that frontline keeps some good data for us, but as we look at the metrics that we committed to reporting to the board, we realize that it does have some limitations. So in order to present you with all the metrics that we've committed to, uh, we've asked our, uh, hiring teams or building and, and school district administrations to, uh, to begin reporting data as they move along the recruiting and interview and hiring process. We also commit to, to hiring administrators of color. Uh, as you know, we are committed to hiring high-quality teachers and administrators. And we've been fortunate enough in these last months to hire wonderfully talented individuals who also happen to be administrators of color. So our work in that area has begun. When we talk about retaining, I just want to address a few things. Um, one of the things that research has indicated is that we introduce and implement a feedback loop for staff of color. Uh, we have already implemented this at the district level this year. Dr. Herman met with, uh, a representative group of all of our staff of color just last week. Tom and I met with a focus group of staff of color individuals as we met with them to talk about their experiences in our high school district and, uh, ways that, uh, we have succeeded and ways that we can improve. Uh, we also aim to strengthen our staff of color affinity group. Uh, we have heard from them. And as we look at research, it's really important for all staff, uh, but a staff, especially staff that, uh, feel like they are in a, a, a minority group in terms of percentage of representation to have a group where they belong. And so we have been, uh, really intentional working with our equity coordinators to create a staff of color affinity group in which they can meet together, uh, and we support and affirm that work. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, we want to strengthen our mentoring program. We have done, um, really good work over the years, mentoring, creating a mentoring relationship for our certified staff, our teachers. We've not done as good with some of our support and administrative staff. So our goal moving forward is to, uh, kind of, um, strengthen that mentoring program and be more intentional about meeting the needs of, of really all of our staff, but especially staff of color. So that is our commitment number two, and I'm gonna turn it to Tara to talk about commitment three.
Good evening. I'm Tara Young, English teacher and equity coordinator at Vernon Hills High School. Um, so commitment three says that, uh, it focuses on honoring and building upon the strengths and assets of every student, promoting academic, social, emotional growth and providing multiple pathways to success. This includes monitoring and assessing the impact of educational programs on the achievement of all students. And so, um, I co-facilitated this subgroup with Shannon Garcia amidst, um, a lot of wonderful people from both buildings, the district. And we really focused on the, the academic growth of our students. Because this commitment is so large and there are so many factors and indicators that go into monitoring this, we focused first and foremost on the academic growth of our students. And one thing that the data revealed is that our students of color are largely overrepresented in our striving, uh, striving learner courses and underrepresented in our honors and AP courses. And so that's something that we really focused on is how do we make sure that all students have access to those higher-level rigorous coursework that will prepare them for whatever they want to do after they graduate from our schools? And so after looking at the data and doing a lot of research and considering the robust discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago surrounding this commitment and thinking about, um, how can we make sure that we're clearly communicating what our goal is for this commitment in order to ensure access for all students? Um, we have revised this, our recommendations in order to more clearly communicate what our goals are moving forward. Um, so the first suggestion that we would like to make is continued exploration of strategies that increase inclusion for all students. This is going to involve, um, a lot of conversations around teacher mindset, um, thinking about growth mindset and engagement and making sure that all teachers and staff, um, feel equipped and prepared to meet the needs of all of their students, which will involve professional learning surrounding differentiation within the classroom, making sure that they can meet the needs of all the students that they are teaching. Um, it also will involve parent education and engagement, um, for surrounding whatever, uh, changes potentially are made. And then also could involve, um, just some conversations around class sizing, if, if class sizes change, um, in order to increase inclusion and access to any higher-level classes. Uh, we also talked the last time about the pile alternative, that we're going to pile an alternative pause structure at Vernon Hills. This is really exciting because it's going to allow us to intensify math and literacy and executive functioning skills with targeted one-to-one and small group intervention. So right now, what's currently happening is we have some classes that are, um, dedicated to those interventions. And instead of having classes dedicated, we're gonna have small group interventions, um, that are hopefully gonna be really meaningful for our students and surprise, and provide them with the support that they need. Um, this will also increase student ability to select elective courses. One thing we heard when we were looking at our perception data is it's really important for our students to have access to a wide variety of courses, especially courses that allow them to pursue their passions and interests. So by doing this type of pause structure where we have our literacy and numeracy teachers pushing in to pause classes instead of having those classes set aside as additions to their schedule, um, it's going to allow our students to pursue their passions and interests, which is really exciting. And then the other thing that we are suggesting is to research the effectiveness of an advisory program. This would allow, um, a mentor opportunity that could ensure that every single student in the building has access to a mentor, um, a teacher mentor within our buildings. It will also allow for the more, more intentional SEL curriculum, which coming off in this post-pandemic or current pandemic world that we're living in is really important that we have, um, an intentional SEL curriculum. And again, will allow students to identify and explore passions and potential post-secondary plans and will be just another place where we can have more targeted interventions, which will, as I stated earlier, allow students to have access to higher-level courses, um, while making sure that they get the support that they need. So now I'd like to turn it over to Anne Singleton.
Hi, I'm Anne Singleton. I'm the Equity Coordinator at Libertyville and I'm also an English teacher there. Um, so I'm here to talk about commitment six and this one I, uh, co-facilitated with Tiffany Scott, who's a counselor at LHS. And so our commitment focused on curriculum and it's ensuring all students have access to a diverse, multicultural, inclusive curriculum that avoids stereotypes and includes perspectives of multiple identities in order to build their awareness as they see themselves in the curriculum and help all students as they seek to understand the varied experiences and realities of others. So, uh, for this particular, uh, commitment, we had two data points that we needed to be looking at. And one of them, the curriculum audit, we didn't have, uh, this year. So I'll talk a little bit more about the plans for that because that required some research into figuring out how to do that and where to go with that. But the other thing we looked at was, um, the survey in November, um, the Equity and Inclusion Survey. And looking at that, we found that not all of our students are seeing themselves in the curriculum. So we began to research, how do we incorporate more student voice into the curriculum? How do we give our students an opportunity to share? How do we give our students an opportunity to share what it is that they want to learn and what they want to experience? And from that research, we found several recommendations that we'd like to share with all of you and propose tonight. So taking a look at that, the first one is to continue professional learning opportunities for teachers on multicultural and culturally responsive education, project-based learning, using surveys in class to increase student voice and using student choice for content, instruction and assessment. And we know many of our teachers already going through those professional learning opportunities have started applying that, have been applying that. So we just are excited about that and we'd really like to encourage like just a little bit more systemic and continued growth in those areas. Another recommendation we have is to use student advisory groups. So we have something like this at LHS, it's the Principal Advisory Board. Once a month, a group of students meet at a different period each month. So they never miss more than one class period to attend. And it's an opportunity for students to share their experiences with Dr. K and with other building leaders in that meeting. And we have a subgroup and they're actually focused just on curriculum and they meet with Mr. Alba and our Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction. So we recommend not only continuing the Principal Advisory Board at LHS, but considering expanding into some other student advisory groups, potentially adding a Principal Advisory Board at Vernon Hills as well. And thinking about how we can have advisory boards that relate to classes, extracurricular activities, athletics and other aspects of schools, since curriculum is certainly beyond the classroom. And then another one that we saw in our research that we thought, wow, this is really great because we already do it, is having students' school board representatives. So I'm so excited to see our students here tonight. You know, you are the reason we're here, right? So thank you for serving in those roles and thank you board for having that. That's something we've done for a long time and it's a great way to incorporate student voice. So I'd like to talk a little bit more about that curriculum audit. The curriculum audit led us to an equity action plan. Thank you. And so Rita's going to talk a little bit about this because she was the one who took the lead on the research for this. She was on our team, thank goodness, because she's got great resources. So Rita, if you could talk about Dr. Dubiel a little bit.
Sure. Thank you, Ann. In our racial equity and diversity and inclusion policy, we had included the commitment that we would undergo a curriculum audit. And as we began to research the notion of a curriculum audit and I reached out to colleagues in several firms that engaged in that work, we discovered that really our actions, because of the work that our equity coordinators have engaged in over a number of years, we were kind of beyond the point where a curriculum audit would meet our needs. And so by reaching out to Dr. Yvette Dubiel from Systemic Equity, Systemic Educational Equity LLC, she's the founder and CEO. We shared kind of where we were in our process. And she recommended that we engage in an equity action plan, which would live alongside the strategic planning that we're involved in this year. So we could take the work that we've done this year, assess where we are currently and move forward with an equity action plan that would include an audit of our curriculum and other strands. And so she comes highly recommended from districts in the Chicago area, Directors of Curriculum and Assessment, when you put out a survey to them and talk to them. Hers is the first name that comes up and she's worked successfully with many local districts in our area, kind of live alongside the work that we've done and to engage in a study of our curriculum to ensure that we have the, that we reflect student experiences and voices as well as provide windows to the outside world to our students so that we all grow from understanding a culturally diverse curriculum, instruction and assessment. So that's how we found Dr. Dubiel and we're excited to work with her and she'll begin working with the team in a series of meetings coming up next year.
Yeah, and all the meetings, we've scheduled them for first semester of next year. We'll have eight different meetings with her. And then that way we can start actions second semester. So that's, that was our reasoning for that because it could have been a year-long process, but we really felt like let's do this first semester so that we can start working on things second semester. So we have the eight day, different dates selected and slated for the work. And we look forward to sharing with you next year about that. I'll go ahead and just talk a little bit about some next steps. Okay, so at this, our, our next steps include the Board of Education and District Administration review this report and consider implementation of the recommended actions. The district leadership team will continue monitoring and reporting on the remaining policy commitments because as John said at the beginning, there are more than four on there. So more information reporting is coming. We are so excited to have Mr. Larry Varn join District 128 this summer as the new Director of Equity. We had a chance to meet with him and he's, it's just, I'm really looking forward to working with him. And we're also, we've got that formal equity audit beginning in the fall with Dr. Dubiel. So that's where we're heading forward. Thank you.
Dr. Denise Herman, Superintendent.
I just want to thank the district equity leadership team and the people who presented. I know John and Tom are getting up to say closing remarks, but again, it was, it's been a wonderful presentation. So anything you want to add?
I would just add in closing that this work is a true reflection of the entire district and our commitment. And I'm very proud to be a part of a team of so many educators who come together frequently to really dig into this work and make this commitment to our families.
John Guehle Yau, Principal.
I concur and we're, we're open for questions if you have any comments, thoughts. I know again, we, we spent quite a bit of time two weeks ago in committee work. So if there's any other thoughts or questions from tonight or from last week, we'd be happy to address them.
I just wanted to say, I noticed that there's definitely a reflection of the conversation that we had at our committee meeting two weeks ago. And I am really impressed with the amount of work that has gone into not only this presentation, but it's truly a reflection of how committed all of the people involved in this presentation were to really partnering with the district. And I think it's a reflection of the partnership that we have. You know, the board passed the equity policy last year and a lot of that work and a lot of the people around this table were all part of that policy and getting that off the ground and getting it to be part of our board policy. The work that's represented here today is really truly a reflection of the partnership between the board and the people who are doing work. So I thank the board for their commitment for the really thoughtful and intelligent questions that were asked two weeks ago. And you know, I, I think what we see tonight here is a reflection of how our professional staff was so committed to hearing those questions and those comments that were thoughtfully presented and incorporating some updates to the work. So I just want to acknowledge that and say how grateful I am and really proud I am of the collaboration that is represented in this presentation. So thank you.
Did you want to?
I think you said everything I was going to say. So no, you made it easier for me. And the only other point I will add is I do think of myself as a person of color. So I mean, thank you. Thank you for doing all of this for all of our students and families.
I just quickly want to thank the team for all the work that they did. Thank you for presenting to us two weeks ago and allowing us to mull things over and you were receptive and open to feedback and we so appreciate that. It's, it's really, you know, rewarding to see that, that feedback was taken and things were, you know, clarified and revised a bit to kind of, I think, find not, not middle ground, but just to find somewhere where we're all comfortable moving forward with this. And I'm really, really looking forward to what this all ends up looking like in the future. So thank you again for your diligent work.
As much as we all appreciate the work that's gone in so far, I'm actually looking forward to the work to come. Cause this is a never-ending project. I don't even want to call it a project. It's a never-ending way of changing the way we do things. And I'm especially excited the equity audit coming up will, as much data as you've collected and analyzed and gone through, there will be some new eye-opening experiences in that equity audit. I know Dr. Dubiel will, will do a great job leading you through that process. I personally have worked with her on another equity audit and she does a great job. So I'm, I'm really anxious to see what that does and how that brings us to the next level and really enhances what the work that we do.
Oh yeah, I'm going to weigh in. I had the opportunity to go to, go, nobody goes anywhere. They just look at their screen. I was at a ISB webinar on equity just a week ago. And was surprised to learn, I don't know why I didn't know this, but I didn't know that equity is going to be on the report card starting in October. And hearing the steps that we're going through. Yes. So the state releases a report card about every district in the state. It's online, easily accessible. It tells you everything about the district. It tells you what our, like a snapshot of our schools, the demographics, what our funding levels are, what the curriculum is and how our, our students are doing based on state testing and national testing.
So it's the way that the state holds all of the school districts accountable?
It is the accountability center. Yes. So it tells us, it tells the community what's happening in the school. And I did not know that they were going to be including equity on the report card starting in October. And hearing them talk about the equity journey being a continuum and seeing the work that has already happened here, both in the board passing the policy and then going on to the work that you have done to put in the metrics and push us forward. I, I feel very comfortable about that first report card because we already started. And I, I just, I, I feel like we are in capable hands and that you are pushing us the right direction. I, I don't know how other school districts are going to feel about it because I don't know if every, like, I didn't know about it. Did you know that we're going to be on that report card and okay, so I'm the only one? But that's okay. That's not uncommon. So I, I'm just, I'm delighted to see that, that you're aware and that you've pushed us along. And after going to that session, thinking to myself, whoa, man, a lot of places are going to be in trouble. They're, they are behind and I feel comfortable that we're at least going the right direction. So thank you very much.
Cara Benjamin Seedall.
I don't want to take any more time other than to say, I know I was one that was asking a lot of questions. I appreciate you educating me on the current status of where we are. I have a much better picture and I'm all in for what your plan is for where we're going. I think we just needed to understand, we were getting caught up on terms. And thank you for kind of hearing us and I look forward to seeing, I, I love the idea of everybody rise up. So that's kind of how you got me on board.
I think my peers said it best and I will just close it out by once again, thanking you guys for all the hard work and can't wait to see what comes next. We appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. We're happy to present tonight. And just so you know, we, we look at what happened two weeks ago as what this partnership is supposed to look like, right? It's not just us presenting to you and you absorbing the information. It's a give and a take. It's a dialogue. That's what we saw it as. And so we are, we're grateful to you for, for being in tune and also willing to, to engage and discuss and, and ask the right questions at the right time. So we're grateful for that. So thanks for your partnership.
Not that I need the last word, John, but I'd be so remiss because while there's a lot of the adults speaking tonight, I think you as a board know, and our students can affirm and attest to this, this work is also being driven by our students. In every way, whenever we ask for feedback, they tell us this is a priority. They tell us this is important to them and their future. And they give us a lot of input on the way they feel, the way they hope our schools would be designed. And the, the hunger that they have to learn and grow as a community with their fellow classmates. So perhaps during board report tonight, you may just share a reflection or two on some of this work as well. Because you know how important student voice is to the policy work and the, the programs that we're developing.
Great. Thank you, Dr. K and Dr. G and everybody who participated in the presentation. That is an outstanding segue to the next part of our meeting, which is our students' school board representative reports. So I will turn it over to you. And by the way, also a very nice touch to close it out on our students because that's really why we're here and what our focus always should be. So great way to, to really put punctuation on, on that presentation. So thank you again. I will turn it over to you.
All right. Looks like we're starting. And before I get into my report, I just want to say that I think Dr. Fisher and I are matching today, which, which validates my belief that is not shared by many, however, but that I have some semblance of style, or maybe we both don't. That could be it too. All right. And just before I get into also touch on what Dr. K just said, I, you can see the work that is being done on a daily basis, whether it be like grading practices or just teachers push it. And specifically, I know they talked about affinity groups and alliances. And I've attended some of the alliance meetings of the MSA and talking with my classmates about how they, they share their religion with others and how they practice it was a really cool and I think valuable experience for me. And I think we should keep pushing students to go off and see how other cultures and, you know, a lot, or affinity groups work and what it means to them. So, but now I'll just start with my report. So the cats are buzzing as the school year begins to wind down. Senior countdown is on and students are trying to keep it together before a well-deserved summer break. Nonetheless, there have been many activities for students to participate in. Going back to Wednesday, April 6th, we held our, our second annual Wildcat Summit event. Juniors and seniors planned and led a full day of discussions and different activities with around a hundred students attending the event. The topics of discussions included healthy bodies, minds, discourse and relationships. As an attendee and leader, I can say that was a terrific and meaningful experience. We held so many important conversations that, you know, just aren't talked about enough on a daily basis in the classroom. So I hope that it can be implemented more in our daily classroom activity. But students enjoyed being given the time to talk and learn about information that can help them lead a happier and more successful life. Special thanks to Dr. Nelson and all the staff that helped put it on because it was a ton of the work. As a leader, I did not do any of the planning work. There, there are many other people that actually planned and coordinated the event and it went perfectly. And then our Wildcat Summit was followed by and built upon by last week's Healthy Relationships Week. Every day, students were pushed to focus on a relationship they had. Monday, focus on your relationship with yourself. Tuesday was technology specifically. Wednesday, the Wildcat Community. Thursday, gratitude. And Friday was just a green out, which I've talked, or for our greened out program, which I've talked about in the past and Earth Day. Libertyville students appreciate all the resource and events that remind us to focus on our health. And I, I'm talking to many students, they, they're just appreciative that there's so many different resources that they can go to for anything. Also on Friday, some students chose to participate in a day of silence for marginalized groups and people. They filled out a Google form indicating what group they were representing. And talking with the classmates that chose to participate after the fact, of course, he told me that he did it as a small sacrifice to show solidarity with a specific group, the LGBTQ plus community. And he just wanted to remind himself of, of all the hardships that others go through on a daily basis. Finally, probably the highlight of my month, yesterday was the Best Buddies Talent Show. The studio theater was packed full of students and their families to see members of Best Buddies showcase their talent, which included many talented singers and electric, electric guitar performance, a mind-blowing magic trick and dazzling displays of art. I also have to shout out my peer buddy Vaughn, who emceed the entire thing and he's great at it. Many jokes and went smoothly. Being in the crowd, I just had to say that the support for the buddies was fantastic. And many people decided to attend that aren't even in the Best Buddies Club. And each performance was followed by a roar from those in attendance, just a great overall atmosphere. I was so glad that it was able to be put on. And with that, I'll pass it to Ryan.
Before you do that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I noted with interest a group at Libertyville High School that I believe you co-founded.
a group at, uh, Libertyville High School that I believe you co-founded called the Gray Area. And I was really impressed with the goal. Would you mind just telling us just like a one minute what it is and how you conceived of this?
Yes, of course. Um, so the gray area, as you've kind of highlighted is in going with these relationship themes and healthy discourse is part of it is in our society nowadays. We're very polarized and, you know, it's this or that. It's black and white and gray area is kind of the combination of both. So we, we discuss a variety of topics from political issues to, you know, more, more fun topics like what's your favorite cereal? And we just, we discuss, we discuss, uh, you know, both sides and we kind of make concessions and come to agreements because healthy discourse is so important. Just having respect for the person that you're talking to and understanding why they came to the idea, like everything about them. And overall, it's, it's going well so far. We, we have a group of about 20 to 30 students. And every week we dissect a new topic and we're going to continue to build on it. Hopefully it's in the real for the future because I think, uh, my friends and I, when we decided to start it, we're just like, it's kind of ridiculous that I'm not calling out you guys as adults, but lots of adults you see in, on social media or whatever, just in normal conversations that you observe are not respectful of others' ideas and they see it as this or that instead of what is in the middle and what can be looked at together. So that's just kind of a brief summary and thank you for pointing that out because I, it's a really great club and I hope, uh, we can expand on it. So more students can join.
I hope so too. You have, um, some, uh, underclassmen that are participating.
Yes, yes. We need more. It's being a senior, people I get to come are mostly juniors and seniors, but we're working on creating a base. So, you know, live beyond our years.
Well, what do you talk about highly charged issues or breakfast cereal?
Yeah, it's, it's a wide variety of topics.
But whatever the topic, giving people the opportunity to practice and model healthy discourse is a very timely subject. Um, I agree with you. Some of us adults could use some participation in that as well. Um, and I just want to congratulate you for a great effort and for starting a new club that hopefully will be permanent at LHS.
That's cool. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Uh, spring sports are in full swing with many teams playing conference games and looking forward to the postseason. Some highlights of spring season are in the girls track meet last Saturday. Anna Becker won the triple jump event with a school setting record jump. The girls across team is currently undefeated eight to zero and play Lake Forest, uh, today, hoping to continue their streak. The boys baseball team is also currently ranked 11th in the state. The CRC, which is our college and career resource center, held a summer job fair on April 20th during the Wednesday flex time. Students were able to attend and talk to employers of local businesses and franchises like Culvers, Six Flags, the Lake County Forest Preserve and more. This was a really great opportunity that the school provided for Libertyville students to get jobs and stay connected within the community. Final college decisions came out in early April, which means many seniors are finalizing their college choices and choosing their housing, roommates and much more. Overall, among the students, the stress of the year and all the choices to make are dwindling down as seniors finalize their path after graduation, either through college, a trade school or the workforce. Decision day is next Wednesday, May 4th, where seniors have the opportunity to celebrate their future. And everyone I've talked to is really excited to share that experience with our friends and classmates. At this time of year, when we've been back from spring break for a few weeks, students tend to be more stressed as the end of the year is approaching and everyone's trying to keep their grades up. Many people I know are using the opportunity to retake tests, to get a few more points and maybe get up a letter grade. AP tests are approaching in the first two weeks of May. So many AP classes are finishing up material and have begun reviewing. Testing will be a new experience for many of our students, even those who took AP classes previously, because tests are fully in person this year. Over the past couple of years, there have been very few in-person AP tests. So students are having to find new ways of preparing and reviewing material. Only a few students remember what an in-person test is really like. So we are having to adapt to get more, to get back to more, a more typical year of testing. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the bystander 2.0 training, which is part of our Healthy Relationships Week. Libertyville and Life of Wildcat has the goal of getting every student green dot bystander training. This training usually takes place once a month or so and helps educate students on the best strategies to intervene in a potentially hurtful or harmful situation. However, one of the limitations of green dot is that it doesn't address identity-based violence, which is attacking someone's race, sexual orientation, gender or beliefs. Dr. Nelson, Mrs. Singleton and a group of students discussed those limitations and created bystander 2.0 training, which was specifically designed to address situations of identity-based violence. The training was during lunch periods and groups of five to 12 students were able to discuss personal experiences with identity-based violence or situation, situation, situations that they have seen. For me, as well as other students who were greened out trained, um, this training was super helpful and added another layer onto what we already knew about how to step in and solve these situations. We discussed a lot of possible scenarios and how we could best respond to each. And at the end of the session, a hundred percent of students said that they were now more confident in addressing a situation of identity-based violence. I'll pass it off to Faith.
Um, I just wanted to say that the presentation was so well put together. Um, I went to the first strategic planning meeting and I wasn't able to make the second one unfortunately. But I love talking with the parents as well as the teachers because you get to see that behind the scenes kind of, um, point of view where the parents don't always know everything that's going on at school because obviously they're not walking the halls. So, um, it was really good to kind of connect with them and be able to talk about really important issues that is not only just going on in our school, but in our community as well. Um, equity is an issue that we always should be worried about, no matter what the places or environment. And, um, I think it's so valuable that we're focusing so much on it because I know that there's so many other places that don't. And I'm privileged to be going to a district that does. So that's all I wanted to say. Okay, here we go. After spring break, there's been lots going on at LHS. One of the last chances for our theater department to put on a show is our spring play, which was on the 21st, 22nd and 23rd in the auditorium. The play was William Shakespeare's A Midnight Summers or A Midsummer's Night Dream. As for all our plays and musicals have hours and hours of rehearsal to put on these amazing shows that our theater department gets displayed for the entire school. Not only did the cast do an amazing job and put on a show that left you on the edge of your seat, but personally, I was so impressed with the makeup and the costumes that were done for it. Putting the audience in a mystical yet adventurous reality. The reasoning behind the value in this play may be greater than you realize. Um, like the characters in this play, we escaped to our dreams to resolve some of our most pressing conflicts. I thought I would share the beginning line in the program because I found it, um, really moving and very valuable. Conflict and the stress that follows can often feel omniscient in 2022. The war in Ukraine, continued impact of COVID-19, stress of financial inflation weighs on us all. And not to mention the daily conflicts of our relationships and responsibilities. I truly believe that theater is a place where we can both consider and let go of these stresses. As Shakespeare suggests, the experience in a theater is but a dream. Congrats for all your guys' hard work to the cast and everyone else that's behind the scenes. Speaking of fine arts, the spring band and orchestra had their first spring concert, April 28th, featuring concert band, concert orchestra, symphonic band and string content. I don't think I said that right. The second spring concert, May 5th, will feature the other half of our band and orchestra, which is Symphonic Winds Chamber Orchestra, Went Ensemble and Symphony Orchestra. The practice and difficulty of this music is harder than people realize. So please, if you couldn't make it, all our concerts are web class live and on YouTube under Wildcat Productions, productions. Amazing work and congrats to all of our music department staff and students for putting these amazing performances together for our school. So, you know, seniors got a five day weekend a couple of weeks ago while underclassmen took the PSAT and SAT. Thankfully, everyone got Friday off to kick back, relax and watch it rain the whole day. Um, I hope everything went smoothly for underclassmen genuinely that participate in testing because it definitely isn't easy. And I know personally, I suck at standardized testing and it's a big milestone that should be appreciated for each and every student. After the past two years, we've been through a lot. So I know it can be difficult. For students becoming a part of the National Honor Society, the NHS ceremony and induction will be held April 27th from seven to eight PM at LHS. Congrats to all the students who worked hard to become involved in such a program. For anyone who doesn't know, for students to be a member in NHS, uh, you have to work on maintaining a high GPA. So this means members of National Honor Society must have a GPA of 3.5 or higher on the 4.0 scale. And also students in the NHS, um, also students in NHS participate in community service and leadership opportunities while attending monthly meetings to show their commitment. So, um, personally I'm in NHS and we'll do canned food drives. We'll go to feed my starving children. You have to get hours within the program and honestly, it's taught me a lot about responsibility and leadership. So I'm very thankful for that. Um, connecting to commitment, true wildcat is something that we do at LHS and it's a part of the culture that we push so greatly for our school. A new true wildcat will be announced on April 29th and this student P can be from any grade level and is a person that exemplifies and leads in the daring mission from NHS. I can't wait to hear who the new true wildcat is for this month. Thank you. Okay. Um, so first about like the presentation, um, I know like for me, as someone who's like a person of color, I, I like, I think it's really important to feel represented, especially in school because like a lot of the teachers and coaches that I have, they're like people that I look up to. So I feel like, uh, the representation can be really like inspiring from like a student's perspective. Um, and so last week was daring week, which was hosted by a prevention and wellness program. Each day was filled with different and fun activities to help bring awareness in a way that was really engaging for the students. For example, on Tuesday, we had the unity fair, which is when a variety of clubs set up in the foyer during lunch periods. It gave insightful information about culture, race, sexual identity, mental health, friendships and many more topics. Also on Thursday, we had their Dare to Empower Lunch and Learn about body image, body image and social media. I wasn't able to attend, but I know many people who went and they said it was a really, it's really, it was really inspirational. And they were so thankful for the opportunity to talk about these topics in school with their peers and teachers. This past weekend, we had our prom, which had a record amount of students with 410 students attending. The night started off with a dinner and then a fun cahoot game, prom court, and then of course the actual dance. It was so fun seeing the senior class come together and enjoy our night together. All students who attended said they had a super fun weekend, especially yesterday with our senior ditch day. Students were able to do a variety of fun activities ranging from going down to the city or going to a water park. On Saturday, April 9th, Vernon Hills hosted its first annual EL walkathon to raise funds for our educational life skills program. Best buddies helped organize this event and it was super successful. It took place at Little Bear Lake and there was a great turnout. Best buddies hopes to make this an annual event and that it grows bigger and bigger every year. On April 5th, Vernon Hills hosted all incoming ninth graders for the eighth grade orientation activity fair. The fair allowed the students to explore all sorts of clubs and sports, uh, to give them a preview of all the fun activities to join in high school. The students were able to ask questions about different activities. This made the many of them feel so excited for all the cool opportunities coming their way very soon. On March 24th, students in personal finance or consumer classes were given the opportunity to take part in interviews. This allowed students to prepare for the real world and go through what a real job interview would be like. Many students have said that this was a cool experience because it made them feel less nervous about having to do a real interview in the future. And they now know what to expect and how to prepare.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, my voice is kind of shot. Um, I'm so sorry about that.
Can you tell us why your voice is shot, please?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm, I play volleyball. Uh, we won 32 to 30 and that is ridiculous. That is like you, you 25. And so, and in that span, we missed six serves in a row and I was one of those included. Which that's my first miss serve of the entire season. So that was kind of tough. Um, for the
Congratulations on your victory.
Yes, it's also
hard fought three set match.
Yes. Happy birthday, Coach Curry. And so, um, for the presentation you guys given, I was unable to make both of those due to volleyball conflicts, but the way you guys explain it, like I, I really appreciate like, even though like I am not a minority, like just like I, I, I can see the way you guys are trying to take a step in the right direction. And I feel like that will really benefit us in like the future. All right. The HHS announced its leaderships for the next student council. Congratulations to exec board president Katie Seer, senior class president, Jenna Sawa, junior, junior class president Haley Kalanowski and sophomore class president, Vee Tessa Posner. Today during school, VHHS Career Tech and Educational Department hosted the Career Expo. With over 30 companies attending, there were many career pathways being exhibited for people to see. Each period, there was a specific business talking to students in the West gym and they were going super in-depth of what their company actually does and how we can get involved in that company. Whether someone is interested in going to college, trade school, military, or just wants a job now, people, um, there were plenty of people there to help you out. On April 14th, Highland Park hosted the CSL Art Show. Every school in the CSL was able to show off 55 of their own artworks. By talking to Mrs. Dolestrom, one of our art teachers, she said that Highland, the Highland Park Art Center looked amazing with all these pieces in it. And everyone was able to walk around and appreciate each other's work in the whole CSL. For seniors, we now have around 20 days left and festivities have started. Each day, now we have an ABC countdown and all of us are just constantly like anticipating the next day. Uh, anyway, like starting off with anything but a backpack day, then the beach and soon karaoke. I don't even know what's going to go on there. Um, seniors have a lot to look forward to, uh, with the upcoming days. The CRC is also starting to post on their Instagram of seniors who have committed and they're now just showing off where everyone is going, which is, I mean, I, I'm looking through that and I'm always excited to be like, oh, that person's going there. It's super cool. Cause I don't talk to everyone in the school, but I just love my class in general. For the past couple of months, uh, many people have been practicing for the spring orchestis. With less than or around like half, uh, one and a half weeks to go, students are, uh, preparing for their final preparations. Leila Schumacher, a freshman, says that all the girls have been putting in a ton, a ton of effort and are ready to show off what they've been working so hard and so long for. Unlike palms, the girls choreographed their own dances and are also able to participate in around two to five dances. Um, Leila also states that May 7th cannot come any sooner. She's so excited. For sports now, I've kind of already talked about volleyball, but, uh, we were able to get a fantastic win against Deerfield tonight on Coach Curry's birthday. It was fantastic. And it's two years in a row. We beat Deerfield on his birthday. That's pretty interesting. Um, other big wins include, um, a win against, uh, Sandberg, York and Dr. Herman, you were able to watch that Libertyville game. And so, uh, next weekend, uh, Vernon Hills will be competing in a 16-team tournament where 10 of the, 10 out of the 16 teams are top 20 in state, which that is just ama, like amazing competition. I'm just so ready for that. Um, it's like, it's great to have that tough, tough competition and going into sectional seeding, we are ready to fight. Also, baseball is actually killing it in conference play and, um, at the moment is leading the CSL South. And, um, they're around one game away from, uh, possibly being the overall conference leader, which I know in our conference has many top 20 teams on the north side. And we've been able to beat two out of the five or six that we have so far. And so surprisingly, we're doing very well. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for student board reps? Okay. Great job, guys. It's amazing. You guys started off at the beginning of the school year doing a great job. But I really observed tonight the evolution of your reports and not only the richness of the information that you realize that we're looking for, but I feel like you've really found your voices, your own unique voices, um, in terms of how you present information. And, um, I just couldn't be more pleased with your participation. So, uh, great job to, uh, Dr. K and Dr. G for selecting these fine students and, um, your commitment this year has really been noted and appreciated. So.
Tomorrow, actually, uh, our board reps and Kara will meet to select next year's reps. So we're already into that process. I'm sure LHS has got that coming up as well. So it'll be fun to have them at, uh, our next board meeting.
Fantastic. We look forward to meeting them and, uh, for you to give them some good advice so that they can start off the next school year on the right foot. Okay. Um, so thank you. That concludes the president's report. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Wonderful. Lots of good news to share. So I'll start with that. Um, the students had quite wonderful things. So these are in addition to what the students reported on. This morning, US News and World Report released its list of the 2020 best high schools. LHS and VHHS were ranked 13 and eight respectively among Illinois schools and 238 and 334 among schools nationally. Again, very prestigious award and recognition that our schools continue to earn. Next, we had several staff members who received honors at the recent Illinois Directors of Student Activities Award Ceremony held earlier this month in Rosemont. LHS, LHS staff recognized were ping pong club advisor Christoph Keyard, GSA club advisor Diane Nasland and LEAF club advisor Dave Lapish, who received the distinguished service award for lifetime contributions to student activities. Vernon Hills staff recognized were principal Vernon Hills staff recognized were principal John Gilliam. Yay. And oh advisor assistant and CRU advisor assistant, Robin Levin. And again, congratulations, John, for administrator who fully supports student activities and uh, positive culture and climate at our school. And finally, for uh, good news, uh, Vernon Hills High School FBLA team was able to attend the state leadership conference in Springfield. A total of sixty-nine students competed in SLC events with forty-nine of those students attending the conference in person, March thirty-first through April second, which yes, was over spring break. The students performed very well and forty students qualified to advance to compete at the national leadership conference July twenty-ninth through, excuse me, June twenty-ninth through July second in Chicago. The Vernon Hills FBLA advisors are Tony Isabella, Lynn Benson, and Kate Isabella. Um, and I just wanted to add, um, in addition to the good news, um, I was able to visit, um, get the, both campuses and, and firsthand witnessed some other really great things going on. Um, attending the Libertyville Vernon Hills volleyball game was very exciting and it was so great to see, even though the competition was uh, very uh, competitive. As soon as the game was over, everyone was shaking hands and just really congratulating uh, both teams for a very hard fought game. Um, last two weeks ago, I was able to attend a dare to empower uh, session at Vernon Hills here with a student dare to empower group. Um, and I was invited to be a guest speaker and to answer student questions and to talk with them about some of the challenges that adult women face in terms of balancing career and motherhood and all of the other challenges. And it was just an amazing conversation. The student facilitator could have been hosting a podcast on like the Atlantic. It was an amazingly well facilitated meeting. Um, I also stopped by the career expo today and saw, again, a lot of students were very interested in picking up dressures and meeting with the adults who were trying to recruit them very hard for summer work opportunities. Uh, and then lastly, both today and tomorrow, um, the AP research seminars, the oral defenses are taking place. And so myself and many other teachers and administrators uh, have volunteered to serve on three-person panels to listen to the oral defenses and then to give feedback to each of the researchers on ways they can improve their presentation or as they finish up their research moving forward in these last few weeks. Amazing research being done by our students and it was just wonderful to have the opportunity to sit beside other. Today was LHS and tomorrow will be Vernon Hills High School uh, staff members. Um, you know, we get to experience hearing from all of you uh, every month, but it's just another level of connection to get to witness students presenting their research and, and seeking uh, uh, feedback and guidance from adults. So thank you on all of that great news and, and great visits. Next up, we have um, a strategic planning update. So that's me again. And I want to thank several board members were able to attend the strategic planning stakeholder event that we had last Wednesday evening. We had approximately forty-five participants and that was students, um, parents and community members. The outcome for that evening was to uh, think, think through, talk through, learn about the possible goal areas that have emerged from the data in our strategic plan work thus far. Um, and at the end of the evening, each participant was able to set what they felt should be the top three priority goals for our strategic plan. Next Monday, the all staff will get to participate in a very similar structured opportunity. So at the beginning of our institute day, all staff will also have an opportunity to engage in very thoughtful dialogue about each of those twelve possible areas for a focus for us for our strategic plan. And again, based upon uh, their review, their conversation and what they bring to the table as educators, they will also be um, uh, completing a form to say what their top three priorities are. Um, so we will use all of that input to craft what will then be a report to the board in June for the strategic plan update where um, you'll have recommendations from each of the stakeholder groups. Um, and that should be very helpful for you in terms of deciding, as is the board's purview, to set the direction and uh, vision for the district moving forward.
So that's the June meeting?
Yes, we, we were gonna try and do May, but we have so many other things on the May agenda. We're going to move it to the June agenda. And we next have Bryant who will give us a COVID nineteen update.
Thank you. Um, again, all the COVID nineteen data is um, up to date on our website and two things that we're looking at first are dashboard, which includes the um, updated daily totals from staff and uh, for students, number of cases. Um, and so I, I've tracked those. There's been a little bit of uptick, but um, you know, our nurses have been working, um, you know, with those students and those families. Again, if the uh, students are um, have COVID and um, have to uh, have the five day, they're still learning and they're learning remotely. So um, it seems to be going seamlessly um, from the, you know, educational side. The other thing that we look at is the community levels from the CDC. And just a reminder, the CDC community level is determined by the higher of the new admissions and inpatient bed metrics. And that's based on the current level of new cases per hundred thousand population in the past seven days. And so Lake County is still in low transmission. And the reason I bring this up again, um, I know it was on the news that DuPage County moved from low to medium. Um, and you know, when that kind of happens, the one thing you want to keep looking at is what's happening in your school. So, um, but right now Lake County still isn't low transmission and we're monitoring everything and um, so that's our update.
And I, it looks like um, based on the definition of close contact, um, even though we have a slight uptick, um, there have been no uh, school-related close contact quarantines.
Uh, no, yeah, we don't have the quarantines and um, you know, we're tracking any of the cases, you know, are they happening? Where are they happening? Are they happening with athletics? Are they happening with, you know, classes? And we haven't seen like an outbreak in any case or anything like that.
And the last thing on the superintendent's report are the foyer request. And this month we received two. The first request was received on March seventeenth and it was from a, a news reporter at ABC seven requesting any data or um, requests we have for forms that challenged library books. Um, we responded on March twenty-second that we had no challenges um, received to date. The second foyer request um, was a commercial request from Smart Procedure um, asking for all current employee staff contact information. Um, and we responded with links to our website on April first. And that are, that's all of the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We will move on to item number three, our consent vote agenda. Again, these are items that were discussed at length in committee. May I please have a motion uh, to approve the consent vote agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Great. Motion passes. We will move on to
Could I, um, we, we do have um, one of the people who's highlighted and then we discussed briefly at the, the meeting when we uh, went over the consent agenda, but because Charlotte Eames is in our audience now, I wanted to introduce her to the board and welcome her to the D one twenty-eight family. Charlotte will serve as our director of data and assessment, a new role in our district. Um, she'll be leading our existing data team who's been working very hard to capture a lot of the data you saw in tonight's presentation. But under Charlotte's leadership, this will just continue to grow and provide more ability for us to analyze data and make very thoughtful decisions moving forward. So would you like to say anything to the board?
Thank you very much for having me this evening. I am so energized by what I've seen this evening. And I'm just thrilled to, to join the team and to start in this role. So it's very exciting. I'm so glad to be here.
Great. Well, welcome. Congratulations. We're very happy to welcome you to the D one twenty-eight family. Uh, we're sorry to Florida for losing you, but we are very fortunate that you are here in Illinois and we welcome you to the team.
We promise the weather gets warmer.
For a while.
Yes.
Then it gets colder again.
Do you remember Saturday? That was spring. I, I hope you enjoyed it. Okay, thank you for uh, that very, very welcome and uh, important uh, pause. Uh, before we turn it over now to the program and personnel committee to uh, Dr. Batson.
Thank you very much. Um, we have uh, two items here on the agenda to uh, vote on. The first one is the amended twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar. And um, anyone want to give a quick background on that?
Sure, I can provide an overview on that. Thank you. Um, many of you will recall that um, and, and some of you will not recall, the long history of this is that the calendar committee has often been asked to uh, address um, the notion of non-attendance days for students when religious holidays fall on school days. And in March of twenty twenty, uh, a group of students appealed directly to the school board requesting that the school board consider the holiday uh, of Eid as a non-attendance day or an institute day. And they presented a thoroughly researched presentation. There were community members in the audience when they spoke to the board and following, um, that was actually in uh, January, February of twenty twenty, in March of twenty twenty, we reconvened the calendar committee. Uh, school board reps served on the calendar committee. We also invited the students who had appealed directly to the board to participate in that meeting. Uh, and we agreed at the calendar committee to present the board with a, a calendar that included an institute day in the twenty twenty-one school year and the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that would coincide with the celebration of Eid. Uh, that worked well for the uh, twenty twenty-one school year. And um, during this uh, year, um, we learned that the date we had selected two years ago um, was actually the uh, not the date that Eid would be celebrated in the United States. And we learned that just a few weeks ago from students who came forward and pointed out the error. Um, the error um, i- is one that was honestly made. Um, and that uh, we hoped to correct even with that discovery at the, the um, the late notice that we did. And so uh, thank you to both buildings for um, being flexible in adjusting schedules and um, things that were planned in order to bring to you this recommendation that we make the, the very late switch of celebrating our institute day on Monday, May second instead of Tuesday, May third. Um, we believe that that would be convenient to other families in the district to have a long weekend with a, a Monday um, off for many students. But it would also coincide with the opportunity for our Muslim families to be able to have a day off of school on the day that their holiday would be actually celebrated as was our original intention several years ago when that recommendation was made. And so um, that, that is the background, that is the request and we are planning um, to um, make that move to Monday with your approval.
Okay. Can we have a uh, motion, please?
Uh, so moved.
Second. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I know we discussed this in committee earlier in the month and it makes perfect sense to, to make this uh, correction as it will. Uh, if you have it um, for this year, um, do we know if there's any adjustment for next year?
The adjustments that we'll make in the future is that we, you know, we do um, have student non-attendance days in our calendar that uh, coincide with other religious holidays. And we always work to verify the actual dates of those holidays in the future. Uh, we will um, check with local um, the local mosque to determine the date that that will be celebrated in our community. Um, there are different dates across the globe based on the lunar calendar of when the celebration actually occurs. And so we'll take that extra step in the future. But um, you know, and we do verify uh, other religious holidays, Jewish holidays that we celebrate um, to make sure that we're placing those on the correct date. So we've, we've um, approached this with due diligence in the past. This, this time, uh, there was just, at the time we scheduled it, we had lots of people looking at the calendar and we thought we had chosen the correct date. So that's the plan moving forward.
Like you say, it's an honest mistake and glad we can correct it in time. So. Uh, so.
Well, for the patience of all those who participated in the decision-making and agreed to make the change.
So no other questions or comments? If none, can we have a roll call, please?
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi. Uh, motion passes. Our second item here is employment of employees. These are um, additional um, employees um, adjustments, if you will, for um, they came in after the committee meeting earlier in the month. So um.
And may I just take a moment to thank the board for that vote and I know that that vote will be much appreciated by the students who again, um, we as a district encourage student voice and agency and appreciate when students tell us that um, you know, we've, we've uh, made a mistake or that they would prefer us to, to investigate a different action. And so uh, I thank you on behalf of all the students who recognized this error and made it known to the adults who could make the change.
Yeah, I'm glad we were able to accommodate.
It's us. It was both nimble and in line with policy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, nice. Okay. So again, we have a, a list of uh, employment of employees here to uh, to consider. Can we have a motion, please?
Uh, move to uh, accept the employment of employees is listed.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or?
Yeah, kudos to Laura Brant. She's gonna be a uh, new social studies supervisor, former colleague. Uh, I could also say nemesis because we competed against each other a couple of times. Good for her. Uh, actually she won both times.
Okay. Any other uh, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, that motion passes and that concludes the program and personnel committee report.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We will move along to item number five, the facilities and finance committee, Chairperson Rooney.
Well, I think we're gonna balance each other out tonight, Jim. Yours was short and sweet and we got a lot to go through for facilities and finance. Uh, we will not be taking action on any of these items, but there's quite a bit to discuss and we're gonna start. Uh, I'm not really sure what, what is, what are the FNF minutes doing on the?
Uh, so tho- that was, and I noticed they're not, that it somehow did not make it into the board packet. So I'll just give those to you at the next committee. Usually, this is almost like a redo of our committee. Uh, now that I'm back in here, ready to go. So normally I would, you didn't have anything really at the last committee. So we usually share the minutes from the previous and I was just gonna share those with you. Um, so I'll just get those on the, on the May.
Okay, I saw the agenda was in there and I thought, okay, I missed something on that. We're glad you're here. We're glad you're back. And we'll start with food service proposals. This is something that will definitely be of interest to our students.
Yeah, so um, I don't remember when we started the process, um, but we, we decided to go out for RFP request for proposals for food service providers. Uh, we've had chart wells for many years. Um, and we've been working through some things and decided, you know what, let's see what's out there. And so uh, within the last few months, uh, we put together a request for proposal. Um, and also to change the way that our, our program is funded as well. Um, so we put that out. It's not a bid. Um, you, you could have bid something like that, but we didn't, we didn't set it out as a bid due to our structure. And so we got four proposals back, um, which was good. I didn't, you know, other districts have done this recently and they've only gotten just two uh, or three, you know, so we got four, which was great. We got from Arbor, Chartwell's our current provider, um, Organic Life and Quest. And so we got those in, some were four hundred pages long and trying to figure out, okay, how do we boil this down and, and analyze this? And so I gave, I provided you with some uh, like a kind of a summary sheet of some of the analysis that we had on the proposals. So um, in, in your packet, uh, there's a document and really there, there's four different, four different um, metrics, I think, that helped us try to understand and also address some of the concerns that we had with what we're currently doing. Um, the first one was um, how many similar Illinois high school clients uh, do the providers have? And um, our Arbor, which was one of them, had three. So they had some high school districts. Chartwell's has two. Organic Life had two and Quest has eleven. And so this, this really is meant to just show like what, what is their, what is their presence in the Illinois high school market? Um, elementary districts are, are fair and legit, but a high school is, runs a little bit different typically than an elementary um, lunch program. So wanted to see that to kind of show how, how prevalent are they? Um, this next one is Lake County clients. So how many Lake County clients, whether they're elementary or high school, doesn't matter, or unit district, doesn't matter to us. Um, but the point of this is that um, when they're short-staffed, they're But the point of this is that when they're short-staffed, they have an ability to pull from other clients. One of the things with Chartwells, because there's not a lot of clients around here, we've experienced staff shortages, and there's just not an ability really to pull from other, from other clients to help fill gaps. And so, we had Arbor, which has seven clients in Lake County, Chartwells two, Organic Life three, and Quest has 11. It's not the same 11, it's different. Also, one client could be several schools, right? So we are one client, you know, so, but we have two schools. So you could have a client with several schools in them. And then in terms of commissions, so this is, this is the, like, the way of the financial structure. So the way this new, this new contract would work is there's no expenditure on the district. The food service program manages all of that. We don't collect any fees. The management program, they run this program in our school, and basically they give us a commission check. It's similar to how like our co-contract works, right? Well, a little bit different, but similarish in terms of we don't really have expenditures, but we get a percentage of sales. And so they offered in their proposal, based on that, 7% for Arbor, 6% Chartwells, 3.5% for Organic Life, and 7.5% for Quest. So Quest was the highest there. And then the last one was average per cap. And so this, this represents about like average sales per student. And really what this shows us is how capable and how strong are they in terms of actually getting students to buy their products?
Right, how well received are they by the students?
Yeah, a high per-cap number shows a very strong program that students are participating in and love and enjoy. And so, 234 for Arbor, 234 for Chartwells, coincidentally, 79 cents for Organic Life, so that would be on the low end, and then 3.1 for Quest. $3.10 per cap for Quest.
Based on the cost of the items?
It can, it can be, but it's more, it's more strength of their sales. Because if things are priced too high, they won't buy them. You know what I mean? So there's a little bit of both going on there. The next thing we did is we took a tour. So we had students and staff from both buildings and district admin go on a tour. So we decide, so at that point, we decided to narrow it down from the four to visit Chartwells and Arbor, Quest and Arbor, excuse me, Chartwells we already have, so we can tour them every day here. We toured, for Arbor, we toured Lakes High School up in Antioch area. And they had, that was a program that's not on the National School Lunch Program, so similar to us, we're not on the National School Lunch Program. So you can kind of see how those programs run on or off the program, look a little bit different in terms of how they run it and what's offered. And then they visited Quest at Highland Park High School. And we asked for survey information from them about their thoughts on menu choices, food quality, customer service, flexible grab-and-go availability through the day, nutritional, healthy choices, and then just strengths from each vendor, things you're concerned about from each vendor. Arbor scored, I would say, mid-range. And they, I gave you all that information. Quest scored very high, almost had all fours. You had to scale everything one to four. They didn't have all fours, but they almost had all fours. Chartwells was low to mid, except they had trended higher in quality of customer service. And then, the final question that I felt was pretty, pretty meaningful to me at least was, if you had to pick a provider for food service for District 128, which would you pick? Arbor, Quest, or Chartwells? Everybody chose Quest, excuse me. So that was meaningful information. So based on all of that information, the people that participated in the tour, the data that I have available in terms of the RSPs, we'd like to move forward with negotiating contract with Quest. So it's not a bid where there was a contract already and they're bidding on it, and then we have a contract. This really was figuring out, right, what, what provider do we think will give us the service that we're best looking for, and then we negotiate a contract with them. And so we have started that process, and so we're negotiating with them right now. So that's really the update that I have, and it's possible I could have a contract for approval for you in May. You know, nobody here, including Quest, is interested in wasting time and getting stuff going, so there's a smooth transition.
I appreciate the commentary on each one of them. I think my personal favorite is they can do our coffee bar whoop, whoop. Talk to me about that one.
Yeah, well, in Quest, part of their proposal also was, on their own money, putting up $100,000 to put a coffee bar at LHS. So Vernon Hills kind of has a spot built in for one, but LHS doesn't really have that. And so that was something that they included in their proposal, which we certainly find attractive as well.
Yes.
So.
And as we still have one of our student board reps with us, I would like to solicit a little bit of his thought on that.
Needless to say, I'm literally, though, I don't know, for, known for our cafeteria food, so I think this will be refreshing. I, I can't speak to it personally. I don't think I've eaten at the cafeteria since sophomore year, which might say something about it. But it'll definitely be refreshing. I think students will really appreciate it, and seniors and upperclassmen will be very sad to find out that they won't get to actually partake in eating, and the coffee bar does seem like a good idea. Be interesting when I come back to see how that looks.
And the students that were on the tour, you know, we, we went to, so obviously, they've been at their own schools, and I think some of them have seen the other school. We went to Lakes, and then we went to Highland Park, and it was like night and day. When, so the, so the students saw the coffee bar, which included coffee, but also grab-and-go sandwiches, grab-and-go, you know, salads. So those students that are in after-school activities, you know, could grab something. The prices were reasonable. Obviously, that's, you know, part of the negotiations. But just the offerings that they offered from, you know, the food, our students were just amazed. And I know Tom's daughter goes to Highland Park, so some of our students went over to their table, talked to the kids. We grabbed some kids that were in line and asked, is this normal? Are they putting on a pony, you know, dog and pony show for us? But they said, this is every day, you know, so, you know, I think, you know, just seeing that, it, you know, we look forward to, you know, having Quest, I think, for our students, and it'll be, it'll be amazing. And the students that went that day really ate a lot. Including me. We ate a lot.
Well, it's research.
It was research.
I had to do the research.
It was purely research.
And thank you for letting me put you on this.
Yeah, how were those students chosen? Because I don't remember filling out a form for that.
The cookies at Highland Park were a lot better.
They were all students, John, that will be here next year.
That's a good point.
Otherwise, you probably would have been.
Yeah.
So our contract with Chartwells, we've had a contract for a long time there, and it's an auto renew. And so you are required by the contract terms to have a 60-day notice, and we've already notified them of our intent to terminate the contract. And so that, that's already done. 60 days' notice would be the end of this month, so we have already done that.
Thank you. And just to confirm what I'm sure you've already verified, but the Quest's ability to serve our free and reduced lunch populations, same or better?
Yep.
Super. Great.
All part of the deal.
I have a quick question. So it sounds like Quest is a wonderful option for our students. While reading through the packet, I noticed that there were some pieces of input from students, and I think even may have been commented on by Dr. Gilliam regarding some of the employees who currently work for Chartwells, and how there's a bit of an attachment and an intense appreciation for these employees. And my question is, will those employees have kind of a first crack at positions that become available when Quest transitions in?
So the best answer I can give you is every company is trying to find and hire high-quality employees, including food service providers. And it is very common, when there is a change made, for the new provider to come in, talk to the current employees, and talk about a transition with them. That's very common, and that conversation is going to happen, and I think it's already scheduled to happen between Quest and our current provider and all that, all that kind of a thing. So they're aware, Quest is also aware, they're going to do the best that they can. But at the end of the day, that's, that's the kind of stuff we've got to work out a bit with them, but yeah, I don't know that there's more that I can really.
It sounds like an effort is being made, though. And I think that's, that's nice to offer to people who are already such an integral part to our, you know, school community.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just had one question. It sounds like the answer is yes, but there are vegetarian and vegan options, because a lot of students are there, and potato is not necessarily the vegetable of choice, and we have real vegetables, yeah.
I would say Quest has a demonstrated pattern of offering high-quality alternative options at many schools in our area and would do the same thing here. And that was even part of their proposal of kind of fleshing out nutritional options, alternative, alternative, can't find the right noun, but alternative somethings, menu options and everything like that. And so absolutely, I think you will all want to eat lunch.
When we were at Highland Park, we talked to the manager about that, about gluten-free options, about vegan options. And they would even, they said they could even go where if they knew they had students, like in the third-period lunch, that they would set things aside to make sure that that person that came through, that like, the first two periods didn't take all the gluten-free. So we did ask that.
I talked about that.
Yeah.
I have a gluten-free challenge, that that was always a challenge, because if you have a later lunch, there was never anything.
So we did talk about that, and they, they addressed that issue.
I appreciate that. Any other comments? All right, well, we appreciate all the research that went into this, and it looks like we got some great options that are also a little higher sales commission. So this is a win-win. We'll look forward to the contract in hopefully May.
Yeah, we're actively working on it, so if we can bring it in May, we will.
Wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to the property tax extension update.
Yeah, so reminder, you all passed a levy back in November, and we've, we get our final numbers. So back then, you know, in terms of the four data points, two of them we know, two of them we don't know, we have to guess. We got what those final numbers are, which tells us our actual calculations. And so, really providing that information for you, there's, there's data there, but essentially I'll tell you we're getting 100% of what we thought we were going to get. So very accurate again. And that, that's not meant to be a pat on my back, that's just, we get really high-quality information from the county. So the county has, the county assessor's office has to give us information on the values they're seeing going on and the estimate of new property. And so, so for example, the, they gave us an estimate of new property at 17.7 million, and we actually had 17.6 billion. And that's not dollars, that's EAV value. So you have to multiply that by the tax rate to figure out how much dollars that's worth. So extremely accurate in terms of that. So that's great news in terms of, that's what we were expecting. In addition, back, I don't know when, recently-ish, there was a new law passed that, that allows districts the ability to recapture monies that were lost from property tax appeals. So the way, I've explained this in the past, and I don't have a pretty chart anymore, but the way this works is the, the process about property taxes is to basically have everybody pay their fair share. The way they determine fair share is based on the value of the property that you have. But the reality is, is humans are working to figuring out the values, and we make mistakes. We, not me, they said, like, people make mistakes. And so there should be an appeal. So when you get a notice of, here's your, here's your assessment, you can appeal this if you think this is wrong. If you think it's over too high, or if you think it's too low, most people don't appeal if it's too low. But maybe, if you think it's correct, you can appeal to the border review, which goes to the county level. And then we try to settle as many of, as those there, because once they settle, then they kind of reshuffle everything, like, okay, we know fair share. Everybody's paying their fair share. If it doesn't get settled, the board review, or if the owner does not like what the border review decided on, they can then either take it to court, or they can take it to a state-level property tax appeal board, property tax appeal, another level of appeal. Problem with that is, there's a log that's years old. So it takes years to figure out, but that doesn't do me much good because we're getting our taxes now. So essentially, the default of counties is, we're going to bill you based on this value of border review, and if you actually get a a result from PTAB, we'll just take it back from the districts in the year in which you get that decision. So the reality is, is districts, including ours, would lose, like, literally, they would say, hey, we're going to give you a million dollars, but wait, you have a PTAB decision for 100,000? We're only going to give you 900,000. And so we would literally lose in any given year, a few hundred thousand dollars. Now.
Evenly revenue we may have spent?
What?
Could that conceivably be revenue we may have spent?
Well, that's revenue that we could have gotten, yeah. So that affects our tax collection rate. Now, when I got here, we were having a tax objection issue. That's a whole different thing. That's because we had some fund balance in particular funds that were too high that we've now fixed. So there's no tax objection issue, but PTABS are always going on. But the reality is, is if you think about it, tax objections, like what we're having, that's on us, that's our fault. But PTABS, is it really, the idea is, is it really a school district's fault that people outside of us can't figure out what the values are, right? And the reality is, they realize, well, no, that's not, that's not the school district's fault, so why are we taking that money away? Because if, say you could settle all the PTABS in the right year, it would just get reshuffled amongst everybody else, right? And so their solution that they came up with, with this new law is, okay, whatever PTABS you paid, you were paid, you had to pay out, or you were reduced by in the previous year, we are going to give you that money as a one-time payment in your next levy. So what happens is, the county clerk will certify, hey, here's how much District 128, District 113, all the districts were paid out in PTABS, and then they say, okay, then we will add that on as an extra levy. So let me say it back a slightly different way. This PTAB money is money that we should have gotten this year, but instead, we're going to then get it next year. It's one-time money, it doesn't go into your base and compound, it's just literally one time. So for us, and we have a slightly higher number than we've usually had, that number is $580,000. So, in our extension, which is property taxes that we will start receiving in May and June, we will get $580,000 more than what we had estimated going in, because, you know, we didn't estimate anything, because we didn't have any data. That's money that we should have gotten this fiscal year, that I counted on getting for this, in this last levy, right? So we didn't get that, so we'll see that reflected in our revenues, but you're going to get it next year. So it's just like a slight off-timing for one. It's not annual revenue that you can count on, it's, it's just one-time money. And so the reality is, is what this will do is, in terms of our future conversation, this will essentially lessen the blow of our projected deficit for next year based on a fully deferred method of property tax. So, anyways, I wanted to tell you that. So we're getting exactly what we thought, plus a bit more to make up for the money that we lost this year.
Is that in perpetuity, every year we have a PTAX? It is just this one year, 2022?
Every year, the county will certify the amount of money that you were, you lost from PTAB in that prior year, and you will get it. So if this, for this future year in disbursements, if we lose 100,000, they will certify at the end of next year, they lost 100,000, they get that 100,000 back the next levy year.
And that 100,000 is added to whatever levy we've already put out, so it's coming from?
It's not limited by the cap, it's not anything, it's just, the way that our county is treating it is a one-time uncapped extension. It's just a one-time shot of money, and then it's gone.
So basically, whatever we are recovering is being split amongst proportionately everybody within our tax district.
Which is what, what it was, which is what would happen is, if it all was settled at the county level, and the, and the state didn't take that long. If somehow the state could get faster at PTABS, that's what would happen naturally. So it's just happening a little bit later. So.
Can you just remind us on, when you say this year or next year, what's the start of that year and end of that year?
Our fiscal year is July 1st. And so I'm talking, I'm talking a little bit out of two sides of my mouth, because I'm saying, I'm saying this year, because our current method of recognizing property tax revenue would say that the money that we collect in May and June is recognized in this year. Should we change, then it would be next year. So it's money that we receive in May and June, we will start receiving in May and June, and then we'll defer that to next year.
We'll recognize it in the next school.
We'll recognize it in that year. So, but that, that, our next one, so maybe I should have organized this a little bit better, but.
We'll come back to that.
Yep.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Like I said, we'll come back to that. Moving on to capital, or to property tax deferral, which we'll loop back in.
Yep, so I put a memo in there, I just put it in there today for you, because I was finally able to get my thoughts down and put some charts together. So, at our discussion on long-term financial projections, we talked that I believe that we have the right timing to switch to fully deferring our spring taxes. As a reminder, our fund balance, the way, the way our fund balance is reported right now includes recognizing the spring taxes in our fund balance. That, that's just been our practice for a very, very long time. We're on the accrual basis of accounting, and it is, it is my opinion that the spring taxes are really, we should really recognize those, because that tag, those money is really for next year, like. The spring taxes are really, we should really recognize those because those, that tag, those money is really for next year, like Jim has given the example. Say you get paid on the thirty, the last day of the month, right? And so if you look at your balance, your bank balance at the last day of the month, like wow, look at all this money I have. But I mean, really, a lot of that money is spoken for because on the second, my mortgage payment is gonna come out, right? So the idea is this money, the cash is collected in May, June, but it's really for the next year, which I think is more accurate. The other thing that we as a district have had, we haven't had as much lately, but we've had it and it'll come up again. Is the idea of your fund balances. And so we've, we've always had the, we've always had the vocabulary. Of our fund balances not including early taxes, right? We say, okay, our fund balance is eighty six million, right? But, but that includes early taxes. So we kind of, this, we take out early taxes. That's how we talk. And, and it's a very, very reasonable way to talk. But it would be better if our financial reporting actually reflected that and we can. There's a lot of districts that do that. There's also a number of districts that do what we're currently already doing. So it's not like there is a precedent out there that every district has to do it a certain way. Districts have the flexibility to do it differently. I think doing it by fully deferring is the best, excuse me, the best method. Because we're on the accrual basis of accounting, meaning we expend in the year in which it's attributed for. We collect money in the year in which it's attributed for. So the, the, the school fees that we receive, like in May, June. All that stuff is really needs to be deferred to next year. Property taxes is a huge example of that. Um, so it'll give us, I think, more accurate reporting. The second thing that it'll do is I think it'll make. The other recommendation I had was considering a fund balance policy. We've gotten tripped up a few times in fund balance policy because of the definition of fund balance. What, are you counting fund balance, including early taxes, not including early taxes, that clarity? Changing this will make that a much smoother conversation because the fund balance will by definition not include early taxes. And so I think that will help us be more clear on what we mean by fund balance, because that is always very tricky. Fund balance and fund balance percentage are very tricky numbers because not every district defines them the same. Even ISB doesn't define it the same. Um, so there, there's, there's confusion, I would say, and this I think will help us decrease confusion, increase clarity. Um, so our auditors put together an estimate, so I met with them on. Friday. Um, and so they put together an estimate, so there's a chart they're showing. Just a very basic balance sheet, assets, which equals liabilities, plus deferred inflows, plus fund balances. So our fund balance that's reported for fiscal year twenty one, that last fiscal year, eighty six million. And so what happened, let me, so if we were on the fully deferred, our fund balance instead of eighty six million would be forty five million. So that difference of forty one million is the spring taxes. And that's exactly what we're talking about. So the eighty six million includes early taxes and when we're talking even about. Hey, what should our target fund balance be? I've always, or how much money do we have to spend on capital project? And I was, the first thing it is like, well, we gotta remove early taxes and then go from there. This starts the conversation already with that removed. So essentially our fund balance would appropriately show forty five million. Now, the forty one million of cash is already there. It's just recognized as a deferred inflow and it's, it's, it, it's just not recognized as revenue yet. Um, so cash is not the same as fund balance, right? Those are, those are two different things. Um. Not only does it affect how our fund balance is reporting, meaning how much money is, are we counting as fund balance at the end of the, it will also affect our surpluses. Um, and deficits, because essentially you're taking money that we were getting earlier and we're throwing that into the next year. So it, it, it shifts the way our surpluses look. So I, I have in here. Um, the surplus projections that we had based on our current methodology from our financial projections. Um, and then I've included the chart to show the, the same chart of like if we flipped to the, the deferred. And this is the one where years ago, when I was looking at this, every time we flipped, it, the numbers just looked really red. And I, what I did not want to do just for a pure accounting change is panic our system. Um, because of a number of other things, particularly the CPI that we're sitting, that we're looking at for the future levy of five percent. That changes the ballgame and makes this look much more palatable. Are the numbers closer? Absolutely, but I would argue they're more accurate. Um. But part of this is next year, we would have a deficit and we would have a pretty significant deficit. But it's a one year thing. And that's really because of the five year, the five percent CPI kicking in in fiscal year twenty four. Um, another thing that's, that will make it more clear is every fiscal year will have one levy in it. Right now. Every fiscal year has half of one levy and half of the other. Next year, it's the whole one point four percent levy. Year after that, it's the whole five percent levy and then future, it just, it's just cleaner in so many ways.
I know you and I sat and talked about it and the way I saw it and it made the most sense is expenses match income.
Yes.
The income we get for a school year is going to match the expenses that we expend. And none of this, you know, there's this ethereal extra forty five million dollars sitting out there. It makes so much sense.
Yeah.
You don't have to preface every sentence with, but back this out and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it'll, I think, make those cleaner. Um, so, so I gave that in there to show, you know, I think this is definitely doable. Um, the other thing that I added um, there is um, showing you the importance of the CP, the impact of the CPI. And so I, I did a scenario with our current methodology, but I did a new scenario with if we were fully deferred and say that five percent CPI that. We're gonna be talking about more in the fall, say that was two percent instead of five. All the numbers are negative by a lot. So that is a very important number in our assumptions. And the CPI assumption is always one of the most important numbers in our assumptions. The other one is what is the raise? Um, on the revenue side. So that's a very, very important number for our financial sustainability. So.
Does that mean that we are expending more than what we're getting in?
If it's negative.
Very basic.
If it's negative, yes.
How is it that because we're working on the, that's the one part I don't understand is that how can we show a surplus when we're working on? Half of a levy and a half of a levy, but yet when the levies are somewhat similar, now we're showing a deficit every fiscal year.
Um, so, yeah, we would only, so that the anticipation, we show a deficit for next year and then it would, it would go away. Um, the reason why is because the sooner you recognize that money, if you recognize it when it comes in, it's more money. Right? It's that every levy is increased by essentially the rate of inflation, right? It's increased by CPI. So the levy that we are gonna start get, the, the revenues we're gonna swell, the cash that we're gonna start getting in May and June. Um, is more money than the previous levy. So you're getting more money sooner. So we're recognizing it sooner. So it's, it's more money sooner. So it. It, it's more revenue, so it shows a higher surplus. Or it's a higher revenue and then matching with our expenditures shows higher. But now we're gonna not recognize that until next year. And so that more money is not gonna show up this year, just the money that we have. On the, on that particular levy.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Does that help or not?
I kind of, yeah.
Essentially, what mathematically is happening is, is ha, so every levy goes up by CPI. What actually would be happening is half of the value of that CPI is thrown into a future fiscal year.
Right. No, I get that. Sorry. But am I reading this right that we are come fiscal year twenty twenty seven? We're looking, no matter what, we're, we are looking at a deficit.
Uh, that, that's based on the assumptions that I used back then. What I would say. You have a, you lose a twenty percent confidence rating every year you're out. And so fiscal year twenty seven is a long way away financially. And there are a hundred and forty six million, a hundred and forty six, excuse me, a hundred and forty six thousand is an immaterial amount of money that. We, that, that won't, well, we'll do our best to not let something like that happen. And that's why, like. Small changes or small assumptions you make now can have compounding impacts five years later. So. Those are the kind of things we look at. So like, do I think that that fiscal year twenty seven is actually going to happen? No, because I think we'll keep watching it because as we get further. Excuse me, as we get further and let's say fiscal twenty eight starts coming on, and if say that looks like half a million dollars neg down. Like, we're gonna have more conversations of like, we're starting, we're starting projecting to trend in a wrong direction. What are the things that we can change now? That will not let that happen.
Yeah.
In.
I mean, it certainly shows that we're clo, we're working closer to the quick than what we are reporting right now.
Yeah, I would say in any financial projection, the first three years are more reliable than the final two.
You don't have a handle on what CPI will actually be.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of assumptions and the assumptions can change dramatically, both ways, better than we thought, worse than we thought. So. So if this is where we want to move, which is what I would recommend for us to move, our next step would be uh, to adopt a resolution. Um, of the board saying, we officially want to change this methodology, this accounting methodology. And they would do that for our fiscal year twenty two. So this fiscal year, our financial reporting would do that. Um, the way, the way that actually happens is they will issue our fiscal year twenty two financial reports, but in that, in that issuance, there will be a. A brief mention of a restatement of fiscal year twenty one. So anytime you change an accounting policy. They have to restate last years and then do this years and going forward. So you have kind of an apples to apples comparison. But they're not gonna go back years and like pretend as if this was changed five years ago. They don't do that. So, so we would have a resolution and so I'd have, I'll have that resolution for you at the May committee to review. So you can take a look and see what is that? What does that look like? So.
I, I definitely think it mu- much more accurately resp, reflects how we collect our money in there. For subsequently spend it. So I, I'm in support of making this change. Does anyone have any? Questions, any comments?
Now, this is something that some of us have talked about for quite a while and I think we have the opportunity now to do this. Without significant um, swing, if you will, in the, in the surplus deficit. Um. Uh, model here and I think it's the right thing to do. It's, it's just so much more accurate. We've had confusion on this. Topic of, of, uh, but, uh, you know, um. Fund balances for, since I've been on the board. And uh, it'll just be nice to have that cleared up.
Right. And the, the deficit that we're talking about next year is a one time effect of making this change. It's not an effect of oh, us overspending in any way. It is. Due to this change that we are making to more accurately reflect our finances. So I think that. This is um, definitely the way to go. Oh, okay, we will look forward to the budget amendment. Um, capital E, capital project transition pathways.
Yep, um, so also added um, was our transition pathways program. So we. Bought the lease for that program. We have to build out that space. Are we actually gonna open bids on Friday? Um, so all this stuff is happening fast. We're finally, finally able to kind of put together a comprehensive, what, what this whole thing is really gonna cost. So sat down with Mark and we looked at all the estimates from STR, our architect, in terms of all the trades. And then adding in all the stuff that I know we're gonna have to pay for in addition to just the trade. So you have design costs. Um, and then we have furniture, uh, and lockers that are going in that space. So we have estimates in there. We've got technology going in there. So that's gonna need. You know, projectors and phones and wiring and cabling and all that kind of stuff and a, something called an MDF or an IDF, I don't know. Um.
Or both.
Kidding, I know. Uh, um, appliances, so it'll have a kitchen in there. So there's, there's dishwasher, fridges. Stove things, um, I don't know if it's a stove, but there's something Kelly will text me later and tell me what, what I should have said. Um, and then vehicles. So part of the, part of, part of this program, it's not really necessarily part of like constructing the space, but it is part of getting that. Is getting the capital outlay ready because it, our capital threshold is over ten thousand is vehicles. So part of running this program is three vehicles. And so. Our plan um, is one multi, uh, one white multi function activity bus with a wheelchair. Lift built in that we have already ordered, uh, like we should have PO and have that, have that order. See, look at that. Profess, excuse me, Kelly, professional culinary kitchen. Um. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
Uh, multi function white bus with a wheelchair, uh, because this is our, serving our, our students with, with needs that we need to be able to accommodate that. And then two minivans. Uh, so the minivans, we'll, we'll see. Good luck buying new minivans now. We may have to drive to Tennessee to find some used minivans. Which we will do this summer. Um, but, but really three vehicles to start. So.
I'll get on that committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I mentioned that and then there, there really are two contingencies. One is an owner contingency that I have in there for twenty five thousand in case. We were wrong about furniture or wrong about tech, you'd be surprised how often we're wrong. Um, and then there's just a general construction contingency of a hundred fifty thousand, which is just. A ten percent, a standard ten percent of the construction cost in case they find something. So with all of that. What I'm saying is this project is about two point one million. Um, it's possible this project could be two million. Um, if none of the contingencies we have in there are realized, which would be great. Um, but, so it's a little more than I thought. I thought we were gonna be between one point five and two. Um, it's a little bit more, but. I was hoping that none of the contingencies we, we actually have to use and we'll be at two. Um, so really the cost of this pro, this project, we're estimating two point one. We'll know very specifically what this will be on Friday when we get the bids opening.
Okay. And that'll be another action item for May's agenda.
Yep.
To get that approved so that that work can get started.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments or questions? Thank you for that update and thank you, Kelly, for keeping us honest. Moving on to the uh, budget amendments.
So in order to do that, um, we need to put a little bit more money in our capital projects fund for this fiscal year. Um, what I'm recommending is just adding a million dollars to the capital fund expenditure because we're gonna incur some of these costs. This fiscal year and we don't have a provision, provision for that. Are other things trending under budget? Yes. Would we maybe have room? Yes, but uh, this is not a risk I'm willing, I really wanna take. It's very easy to just, we're just adjusting one item by a million dollars in a capital projects fund, which is essentially, we're just gonna transfer a million dollars more from O and M. Into capital projects fund. So, um. So in order to do that, we have to do a budget amendment. And I don't really like doing budget amendments. There's some districts that do them every year. I don't like doing that because we set our budget and I wanna really see how it performs. Um, but this is the, this is the time that I believe it, it's worth it to do an amendment. Um, so do it, to do a budget amendment, um, is the same process required to do a budget adoption. And what that means is before you can adopt the budget, you have to have a public hearing. And before you can do a public hearing, you have to give a thirty days notice in the paper and you have to have this budget posted. Um, the district office is online for people to view. It's already on our website right now. Um, and we will, we certainly have plenty of time. And so my plan is we can do all of this at our June board meeting. We can have a public hearing for adoption. Usually, like when we're doing a budget, a budget adoption, we try to separate the hearing from the final adoption, just so there's more space. But with our current structure of meetings, um, there's not really enough time. We'd have to schedule especially, but also. Adjusting just our capital projects by one million, I don't know that. I, I'm not as concerned about that because we may not actually spend much or any of that in fiscal year twenty two, this fiscal year, but I just, I wanna be safer. I wanna be safe than sorry um, with that. So, budget amendment is for June. And because now we're wrapping up the fiscal year, we need to do our fund transfers to pay for the capital projects we've already done. Or that we're wrapping up doing, particularly the LHS fieldhouse. Uh, so that six point five million dollar project that we're not all the way done spending money on, but we're almost there. Um, right now, we've spent, I think, this fiscal year, I think, five point eight millionish. Um, we need to transfer money, we have to get money into our O and M fund so that it can get transferred into our capital projects fund. So the original plan. Was to transfer, it's not technically a transfer, it's called an abatement, but it's essentially a transfer. Two million from a working cash fund in O and M. Or I think I originally had it working cash to capital projects, but I'm saying working cash to O and M fund. And then, um, and then we would just take that other four point eight million just from O and M fund balance because the O and M fund has a. A large enough fund balance to just transfer the rest into capital projects. Um, so doing that abatement and all, that abatement just requires just a board action at a meeting, nothing else. In addition to that, so that additional million, what I would like to do is transfer a million from our. Transportation fund into our operations and maintenance fund. Why the transportation fund? One reason is I'm watching that fund balance and as, since we got our fiscal year twenty one. Um, numbers, that fund balance has been growing a bit the last couple of years. Because we haven't had a ton of transportation expenses, right? We were kind of shut down for quarter of a year and then there wasn't a whole lot of transportation last school year. We've had some, but that, that balance has been growing. And so I don't want that to get too high. Um, to put us in a jeopardy of having some type of tax objection. So if we transfer a million out of there into O and M, that will alleviate. Alleviate that risk, I would say. So, so in order to do that transfer, that's a, that's um. That's an operating funds transfer and so that actually does require a public hearing. And then uh, board adoption. Again, I think we can do all of that in June. So at our June meeting, we would have. A, a hearing for the budget amendment and we would also have a hearing for the transfer. And then once you have those hearings where you can. Both adopt the budget amendment and you can do the, approve a resolution for the transfer.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yes. Where can we find the um, amended budget on the website?
It should be under business office, financial, financial reports and budget. So it should be there. It should be listed as the fiscal year twenty two amended. Tentative amended budget.
Other.
Not there? Well, I will check and make sure it is there. I thought it was there, so. Financial documents, budgets.
Daniel Stanley Business.
Oh, alright. Sorry, I had a folder that I used to dump this stuff in. Um, I'll make sure it gets up there. So. Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we will look forward to the uh. Resolutions um, and the public hearings for both the budget amendments and the fund transfers in the, at the June meeting, not the May meeting. Okay. Any further conversation on that? Okay, we got all kinds of stuff we're gonna be.
We're almost done.
Addressing in the, uh, yeah, the next one is, uh. Dan almost had to resuscitate me when I saw the numbers on this. Some uh. medical and dental insurance renewal rates that have significantly increased.
Yeah. So we have our, we got our final renewal rates um for insurance and they're not good. Um but we kind of knew they weren't going to be great. Um our PPO renewal is at an 8.2% increase and our HMO renewal is at a 7.6% increase. Uh good news, our dental is a 2.3 decrease, but the amount of money we spend on medical is much more than dental. Um this is really for two simple reasons. One is we've had bad losses in our program. Um we have, that, we have spent more, so we're part of a night pool, but the pool has spent more money on our claims than the money that we have contributed to those claims. So we've had bad losses for two years now. And so, so they look at a 48-month span. So we've had a bad losses.
Not unexpected with the pandemic, I would suppose.
Uh they're not COVID-related. They're just other things. Um so we've had bad losses across PPO and HMO. Uh and the whole pool has too. So it's not like the whole pool is great and we're terrible. Like uh there's been bad losses across the entire pool. Um.
How big is the pool?
Uh well, I should know this. Um dozens of school districts. Um I want to say 35 school districts-ish. I could be wrong. Um but a lot of, a lot of school districts are, are part of the pool. So um in addition to that, which is more probably to your point was the cost of health services is significantly growing. And so everything is costing more in the health services and that is, I think, much more understandable with the COVID pandemic. Um but that's something that we're realizing too. So bad losses and health services costs are going up. So.
Can I ask a silly question? Why would PPO 350 be more, cost more than PPO 300?
It's a good question. It's very, they're very similar. So I, from a underwriter perspective, they would say it costs the same. Uh but technically there's a slight nuanced difference. So the difference between the reason why uh the PPO 350 would cost just a fraction more than 300 is the co-insurance level is different. So on the PPO 350 co-insurance, which, so the way that works is you hit your deductible first, right? And then once you hit your deductible, then co-insurance kicks in. And so then you pay a percentage. So really the insurance doesn't pay anything up to your deductible. And then after that, until you hit your out-of-pocket max, you share. And so you, so you could have a 90-10 split, you could have an 80-20, you could have a 70-30. A 350 plan is a 90, 90-10 split. So that means insurance pays 90% of those costs. The employee pays 10% of those costs. The three, PPO 300 is a 80-20.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that, that it, but again, an underwriter would say that's mathematically equivalent. That's not to say one is better than the other. They're very different. And actually, depending on your needs, the 80-20 split may be better because you could hit your out-of-pocket faster depending on what you got going on, right? So they're, they're not, it's not that the, the 90-10 is better than 80-20. It's just different.
I guess I was assuming there were similar plans, just different deductibles and that's not the case. Yeah, that makes sense.
And can I reconfirm that you had anticipated the, some of these cost increases and had
Yeah. So.
budgeted for them appropriately.
Preliminary renewal was a 7.9 in the PPO and a 10.3 on the HMO. We have far more higher participation in the PPO than the HMO. Um so our renewal came down on the HMO, but it went up on the PPO. The blended effect of that, like when I just plug in everybody, is about an 8.3 on the preliminary renewal. And surprisingly mathematically, it's about an 8.3 still uh when you blend how all that works together. So I did have that in my projection. So when we did our projections but in March, what month is this? April? When we did it last month, I said last month only. We did, did we do it in March or February? I don't know. Whenever we did that, I had the preliminary renewal numbers in there. So I had um the higher numbers in there. So those, those numbers are in my, were in my projections.
That's just, I wanted to, that while the numbers look high, they were accounted for and.
They are high and they were accounted for.
And anticipated. Okay. Great. Any other questions on those? Okay, moving on to the S R three funds and the plan for what to do with that grant money.
Yep. So we, all of our ducks are now in a row. Um so the S for three grant that we were allocated, this is by the American Rescue Plan uh that was done by the Biden administration. Um we were allocated half a million dollars essentially for that program. And part of that requirement to get those grants is you have to have a plan. And what I have for you is our plan. There's not a whole lot of uh guidance on what your plan has to say. It just has to be written. And so we've done our best and we kind of modeled what some other districts have done. Um but we wanted to keep it simple and straightforward. And so we have our plan for how to use that money. The requirement that was new for this grant that was different for S R one and S R two um is you have to, you have to spend um no less than 20% on addressing um the lost instructional time due to the pandemic. And so, so we've identified um at least that much for that. And so that, that amount of money is reflected in the social emotional learning interventionists and the math interventionists and the tutoring. Um and the rest of that is for the HVAC upgrades that were done uh last summer. That was to increase ventilation at LHS that we identified. Um so we've already done that. And so this will be used. So the, the money, excuse me, it's fun that you can use for anything from the very start of the pandemic through um September of 2024. So there's a wide breadth to that and we felt this is the best way to use those funds. Um so this is our plan. Um and an additional part of this process is you have to uh get feedback and get feedback from your stakeholders. And so actually, you may have seen there's a thought exchange that went out today to solicit that feedback, to give thoughts or other ideas for that. And you could see that. I encourage you all to participate because you are all stakeholders. Everybody that can hear my voice, you're a stakeholder. And you're encouraged to participate in that um to give us that feedback. I think it's open the end of this hearing, right?
It's open for a week.
For a week.
So next Tuesday.
Okay. So it'll be open and we'll share it. We'll have that information uh next time. And then in order to adopt, the board will have to adopt this plan and we have to put this on our website uh which we will. And there has to be a hearing at our next meeting. So at the May board meeting or, yeah, the May board meeting, we'll have a hearing on this plan. So anyone can again come in. So a lot of hearings coming up. Um but that's how it is. So once we get that done and adopted in May, we'll file that and get, I think we can get, we should be able to get most if not all that money by the end of the fiscal year.
I know that email went out today. Will it also be shared on social media?
We've had that discussion. Um and I have not put it on social media yet, but we our, our thoughts were not to do that because that would make it open to anyone anywhere on the planet that
Oh.
wants to give us input.
Is there anything to prevent someone from um participating multiple times?
Yes, we have it set that um that you can only get in there once.
You can, each person can only get in there once, right? You can go back in and add additional comments to the thought exchange.
Yes, you just can't repeat.
Yeah.
Repeatedly going.
Entries. Okay. You can expand on your ideas. That's the nature of thought exchange is not just to answer a yes or no, but to give your thoughts and then see what that might generate in other people's thinking. And you can always go back in and look again and maybe comment on some new ideas. Um but it is set so that.
Each email address only gets one shot.
Yes.
One, one palette. Mary, will there be a like reminder email towards the end of that week for people to respond?
I'll be putting something in Pop Prince on Friday and then I'll do one more reminder, probably Sunday or Monday. We're having a lot of activity. It's a, it's a very, very.
That's good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, there's a lot of good, good information.
Mary, was this sent to just parents of students?
It was sent to staff, students and parents. Um if we, I wasn't aware we wanted to share it with the board giving feedback on its um proposal. So I, I can certainly.
Well, I think it might be helpful to send it so that for, so all the board members, so they can see the dialogue.
Absolutely.
Going. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Absolutely. I'll send it now.
I don't.
Yeah, I'd like to see the dialogue. I, I would.
Yeah, for those who have not used this application, it, it's interesting. You'll, you'll just get a taste of that if nothing else.
All right. So is the idea, once we get all the feedback, if it doesn't align with the plan here that we updated before we send it out, is that how it works?
Good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the cost for the interventionists for their supplies or is that for salaries? Because I thought we couldn't use S R funds on salaries.
You can absolutely use S R funds on salaries.
And use S R salaries. And then this is just a one-shot. So is what do we do after?
Well, it's a, I think.
Great question.
Excellent question. And it's an important thing for us to address so that there's no misunderstanding among our board or among the community of what will happen next. So do you want to address that or?
Not really.
Okay.
These, these positions were hired and intended for the duration of which the funding would exist for them.
And the spending on that funding goes into next fiscal year?
Um it, we already have those positions here. And so we, it, it would be for this year.
It's for.
Just like, like for instance, the address checkup upgrades we did last summer, like it'll go towards that money that we've already spent.
So it's for this school year.
For this fiscal year ending in June.
Yep.
Yeah.
So if we feel that those positions are still needed and required, we will need to look within the budget and figure out how to shift some things to continue to offer those services should they be needed. Is that a fair statement?
Yep. You can do almost anything. You just can't do everything.
Right.
So you'd have to figure out what are the priorities, which we're, we're figuring that out and just all kinds of budget stuff right now.
Yeah.
Uh so we're, we're in the throes of all of that.
And yes.
It will be looked at within the bigger picture of the entire budget and how to meet the needs if we still feel that there's learning loss that needs to be addressed.
I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
You said it. Okay. I mean, I, I think we're going to have a lot of data to look at and to see how effective was it? How much was it utilized? And where does it align in our priorities of closing the gap? Because we have not closed the app yet.
Right. Okay. Any other?
Casey Rooney, facilities and finance chair.
No, thank you for your patience. And again, for the kind of redo of our committee meeting. So thank you. But nothing.
Thank you. There was a lot of work put into uh the facilities and finance information for this board meeting. So I think barring any other questions or comments, that is it for facilities and finance.
Okay. Thank you. Uh moving on to number six, the Illinois Association of School Boards update from Mr. Dr. Batson.
Thank you. Uh just a couple of quick things. I'm not sure if everyone got this email, but I'm going to describe what it is just in case. Um the, as you all know, I'm the representative for IASB and as part of that role, I sit on the resolutions um um a group that votes on the um resolutions each year in November. Uh we've had conversations on those. We get the booklet coming out in July or August or something like that. And we review those and then we vote. Um I, I cast the vote on behalf of the board. Uh that process actually starts much earlier. Um and I just wanted to draw to, to your attention, they're actually um asking for resolutions. If a board wants to submit a resolution, we can do that. If somebody has some concept or some idea that you really feel um is worthy of getting the IASB to support, to get behind and, and really uh push that uh with state legislators, that kind of thing to try to get school code changed, try to get laws changed, that type of uh, type of thing. So uh that process starts now. The uh, I believe the deadline for submission is in June is June 22nd is the deadline for proposals. So what I would say is somebody has an idea. Let's bring this up at uh program and personnel in May so that if we want to actually create a um a resolution, we can go through that process, see how that documentation might look. We can review it again in June and then submit it. Uh we'd still have time to submit that uh by the deadline. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um and then I also wanted to add on, uh it's not specific to IASB, but um uh I've been asked to comment. Um as you know, this meeting was scheduled, rescheduled to tonight because of the Ed Red meeting that occurred last night. And I just wanted to give a, a brief description of what that is and, and as much for the public as anything. Ed Red is a, an education advocacy group that's comprised of a number of school districts, I believe, like 80 school districts in the Chicagoland area. Um and it advocates uh on behalf of uh all of us uh on education-related items. Um almost specifically, almost uh 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 I can't think of the term I'm, I'm looking for, but uh related to Springfield, related to the legislators uh in Springfield. Uh last night was a celebration of their 50th anniversary, which was, was interesting. And it's basically a dinner meeting with a, a rather, some interesting presentations. Um uh I was there, Kara Benjamin was there, Dan, uh Don Carmichael was there. Uh Dr. Herman was there. Uh a- as an example, we sat at a table with uh with Daniel Dedik, I think is how you pronounce his name. He's a um representative uh from part of this area as well as Senator Adrian Johnson, um who was at our table as well. Um and had great conversation. Also, one of the board members from District 73 joined us and a board member from uh your former district, 125 Stevenson, as well as the business, chief business official from uh 125. So it's an interesting conversation that we had to have and uh and uh share and, and uh talk, discuss education-related things, whatnot. Um one thing of note, as you came in, there's sort of a social gathering upfront. And uh they often have uh small groups of musicians or performers from different schools perform. At this one, they had pre-recorded one, so they had a screen uh on the side. Uh and uh one of the times I turned around and looked and there's Vernon Hills uh Wind Ensemble performing for the, for the group. So we were, we were represented there.
Thank you to Mary for submitting that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Had one from each school.
Yeah. So I, it was kind of noisy and kind of crowded, so I didn't hear all of the different groups, but I did happen to know this for Vernon Hills when I was there. They just uh, again, just a keynote was uh Dr. Carmen Ayala, the state uh superintendent of schools. Uh they gave a presentation talking about SEL and, and coming out of the pandemic and whatnot. And then they had a, an SEL panel. And um Adrian Johnson, Senator Johnson was on that list. Um group, Representative Michelle Musman, who's also the chair of the Education Committee and a couple other education-related uh uh groups was on that group. She actually won an award last night. Uh and then superintendent from District 15, Lori Heinz, uh Michael Di Bartolo from, from District 21. The uh, he's the uh Student Services Assistant Soup and uh uh Jody, I'm going to butcher this name. Um Merg- Mergaly, Merg- Merg- Mergovry? Mergaly? Yeah. Um and Cara, Carla Owen uh was a board member from District 207. Um I'm sorry, uh Dr. Mergaly is the Assistant Superintendent. Um Michael Di Bartolo is the CSBO, the, the their Dan, the version of Dan. So it's, it was a, a good evening and it's nice to see board members and administrators and whatnot from around the area that you don't necessarily get to see all the time. So uh it's, it's a great, uh a great group and happy to be um, you know, part of the, the team supporting that. So.
Can I jump in on a few things?
Mm-hmm.
Uh they presented on one goal, graduation.com uh has funding for Illinois Tutoring Initiative. Uh so tutoring is available statewide. Um their uh ISB has a coach mentor program that they are uh promoting. Um affinity groups. Uh there's affinity group training available. Uh there's virtual training for resilience education at childhoodresilience.org um which apparently is uh, it's being well-received, but a, a number of, anybody here can go on if you want. I can make that available to you, the link. Um but it's an opportunity to receive training for free um to improve our ability to respond. Um and then uh social emotional learning hubs are being created in the state of Illinois. Uh there's one for our region that's going to be available. And then also I was challenged by uh the executive board member from District 73. There's going to be two executive board member positions opening. And he said, hey, somebody from D128 should think about that. So I promised him I would bring that up. Uh so not one, but two possibilities to get a board member through or on the Ed Red Executive Board. Um their feeling is that Cook County is very well represented and Lake County is not as well represented. So they're looking for people. So if anybody is interested, I can tell you very little about it. But I can find out a lot from Joel because he's, he's got his fingers everywhere. He's, he's very well connected though.
It, it was interesting. Doctor, I, I really, as you mentioned, a lot of her presentation was talking about the resources. A lot of her presentation was talking about the resources that the states are working hard to make available to districts, to individuals, to professionals, to. To whatever. So there, there were a lot of things there. I took a few of those notes as well. So.
There was also, if I may add, a link shared to. Let's see, I have it pulled up right here. Childhoodresilience.org, which is a, a, well. On my phone, I took a photograph. So let me see if I can kind of.
That's the training one.
That's the.
Training?
Yes. So it's to, to, in case this wasn't mentioned. So it's an online training in order to inform. Educators, parents, any other members of a school district on. Trauma informed practices. So super relevant to. Life in post pandemic.
So.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Is there any seat all update?
There's actually not.
Okay, perfect. Future agenda items. Open for discussion.
If I might add, you might have noticed that we discussed the renewal of the e-learning plan at the April committee meeting. And we were to schedule a hearing and your adoption of that plan. We postponed that for, until May. There was some pending legislation that. Could have. Perhaps lessen the requirements of that renewal. We consulted with Dr. Michael Carner. The regional, Lake County Regional Superintendent of Schools who advised us to just go ahead with the renewal of that plan as we had presented it to you. And so that will come with a public hearing at the May meeting. Another public hearing.
Lots of public hearings, yeah.
Related to the renewal of the e-learning plan as is. And. Once we renew that, even if legislation changes, we will have adhered to. The recommendations that could be present in that new legislation as well.
Good. Thank you.
I forgot to mention, if there is any board member that does have any ideas for resolutions, if we're going to discuss it at the main meeting, please reach out. To Jim and Denise so that we can put it on the agenda and make space for it.
And we have to, but just, just if you did.
It'd be nice. So that we have it on the agenda. Yeah.
At FNF Committee, the Vernon Township Energy Resilience Commission. We were, or we're going to have a meeting with Veragey on Thursday. There was a meeting, it was the same night as the meeting that we had. Just last, what was that? Wednesday? But so I wasn't able to go to that one. But after we meet with Veragey, we'll be able to update it FNF.
Thank you for your. Lisa Hassel, President.
Okay. Any other future agenda items to discuss? If not, can I please have a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters under five ILCS 120 slash 2C2 and. Employment of an employee, five ILCS 120 slash 2C1.
So moved.
Second. Roll call?
Drumkey.
Hi.
Sorry. Hassel.
Hi.
Co-Carni.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Great. We are. Convene, it's 9:34. Let's do just a five, six minute biobreak. We'll convene an executive session in five minutes. Okay, we had a motion and a second to return to open session at 10:49 PM. Can I ask for a motion?
I move to approve the last chance agreement as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Co-Carni.
Hi.
Motion passes. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Four year old.
That's right.
No worries.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Co-Carni.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Thank you. We are adjourned.